Good evening. Welcome. It being Tuesday, November 7th, I'd like to call the meeting to order. May I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, do we have any Watkins this evening? Yes, Mrs. Burbine, come to the table.
Thank you.
Something Penny Cresting.
Name and address.[28.14][28.14](Laughter).
Anne Burbine, 10 Pettingill Road. As you all know, I am a merchant in North Situate and have been there for a very, very long time. What happened over the weekend was worse than awful. And my heart goes out to all of them at Jamie's. However, I have to say, and please understand, I think our fire department and our public safety people are the best. We couldn't ask for better people than we have. My concern is with the new public safety center, there was only one engine there at 4:30 in the morning. There was no ambulance. And, you know, once upon a time when I voted for this public safety center, it was supposed to be staffed. There was supposed to be at least two fire engines there and an ambulance. And the ambulance goes back to First Parish Road at 5 o'clock every day. I don't know if it's because we don't have enough help or what the story is, but we all know that time is of the essence, and that's what we were told. And when you have a truck show up with two people on it, and if somebody were in a building, and there are eight tenants in my building, and my biggest fear is that place is gonna go puff. And if that one truck shows up, they can't go in and try and rescue those people. Plus, there's no ambulance. I am not being critical. I am not making accusations. I am just trying to figure out where we're going and how are we going to get there. I just need to know why there's no ambulance there overnight. I need to know why there's only one truck. That's my question. That's all I need to, that's all I have to say. But again, I have to tell you, our fire department is second to none. So it is not about the fire department. It's about, we have this new building and there's nobody home. Thank you.
Well, we've received nothing but praise for the response time that the public safety fire and the police both with regards to that tragedy. Chief, I don't know if you want to comment at all with regards to the stepping and the trucks that were there that evening and the response time?
So we do have an ambulance during the day. We have a daytime second ambulance. And the goal is long-term, hopefully shorter term, to have a second ambulance 24/7. We've been working on that since last year. We started the ambulance, I think it was in April, over two years. So we started that with the goal to have it 24/7. That was part of the goal of the new building, was to be able to expand because the old building, we could not do it. There was basically barely room for two personnel there. So we are meeting with budgets coming up, and the goal, even talking with Tricia last year, led us to try to get that station staff with the ambulance 24/7. The response times are better. They are two minutes better going into North Situate. The engine got there. They got there, the car came in at 4:20. At 4:22, we were dispatched. At 4:27, they were on scene. We had heavy smoke and fire coming from the rear of the building. It had already vented out. So it was a serious fire when we got there. We tried interior operations, but it was just gone too far. The whole second floor was going, so we went to defensive operations. So I think the execution of the fire, the response, granted, Engine 3 is gonna get there first, they're closest. The apparatus in Station 1 is gonna take a few minutes behind. So that's a challenge. But we did have people there. If somebody was on the building, had to be rescued, we tried to drop everything and get in there and do that. You know, as long as, you know, we take risks when it comes to life safety. But would it be better if we had four people there? Of course it would be. But, you know, we're trying to work on that. That's also, you know, it's also a financial aspect. But now we have the capability to do that, and that's what this building brought us, brought us the capability to have four personnel up there at least during the day. And the goal is always said during the whole process, we want to have 24/7 coverage up there for the ambulance. But we're starting now with daytime coverage, which we have right now. And I'm hoping during budget season to sit down and try to promote that for next year. But as far as the response, the times here, I have the report right here. The response times were excellent, and I got there fairly quick myself. The police already had both ends barricaded off. We had our personnel there. It took a little while from Marshfield and Cohasset to get there, as it typically does with mutual aid. But our goal is to, you know, make sure life safety first, and to keep that to one building. We had a gas station next door we had a lot of concern about. They just filled up with 18,000 gallons of fuel. So we want to make sure that that did not spread beyond the building itself, and they did a great job doing that.
Yeah, can't thank you enough. And I'm sure you were probably gonna talk about it during your section, Al, and invite the chief up, so...
Well done.
Yeah, so sorry about preempting that. But, yeah, I mean, I know, on behalf of the board, can't thank all of you enough for all the work that you did that morning, calling in everybody. And it is a great loss, and we're very sad for the Constantine family, but happy that none of your crew, or the police, or anybody were injured. So, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Nobody was injured. Everybody did a great job, and like I say, you know, lots, lots go out to the family too, and the Constantine family, and all those employees who lost their means of income. So we're all thinking about them too, but nothing else different could have been done with the resources we had. They all showed up. We got good mutual aid. All the apparatus was set up perfectly. Because if you don't do that right away, things can go sideways. So just looking back at a fire, I often try to critique at what we could do better, but I think overall, things went very well there. Guys did a great job. We had a lot of people called back coming off duty, which were very helpful. So, you know, we were there. It took a couple, three hours to really get it under control, because it was all on the second floor. There's a lot of stuff stored up there, so you get a lot of fuel up there, difficulty couldn't really access it. I've been up there before for inspections. It's an old, old building with a lot of stuff in it, and, you know, it's also grandfathered, so it doesn't need all the safety components of today, sprinklers and the alarm systems and all that. So we would do the inspections. It would always pass. They did a good job with that. But when you leave there, you notice it's still not up to the modern, to the modern specs and what you need for safety today. So I know we all hope they rebuild, and they rebuild it with a safe building for everybody, and thank God it didn't happen during business hours, and it didn't happen with anybody, you know, heavy winds and nobody got hurt.
Amen.
Amen is right.
Anybody else have anything to the chief?
No. You said it very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Al?
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, wait. Any other Watkins? I apologize. Okay, none. Al, sorry.
Great. I have just a couple of brief comments. The capital planning process has started, ably led by our finance chairperson, Nancy Holt. And then also, our budget process is now underway and launched. We expect to be done in a timely manner and ready to bring the budgets to the advisory committee, capital planning committee, and of course, the board of selectmen for all the reviews to begin essentially in January. The annual special town meeting is next week. It's at the Performing Arts Center, which is different. I think we need to make sure that people are well aware of that. That's a new location. It's a lovely location. It begins at 7 o'clock. The moderators' meeting is tomorrow at noon. It'll be held here in the selectmen's hearing room in preparation. That, of course, is an open meeting. And then there is a meeting that on Wednesday afternoon of the Regional Sewer Committee, which is looking at searing, using, taking advantage of Hull's excess sewer capacity. And it's a collaborative between Situate, Hull, and Cohasset, looking at how we can use that excess capacity to bring sewer to the north end of Situate.
Where and when? I'm sorry, where and when?
Where?
Where and when?
The meeting will be in the public safety building, our public safety building, tomorrow at 3:00 PM.
Sean, you gonna go to that?
Can you go to that, Sean?
Yes. Kevin, you going? All right.
Kevin's involved, yes. So that would complete my offerings today.
Anybody have any questions, Ralph?
No.
I think we're all real interested in the sewer, you know, what comes of that meeting, so Sean, you can...
Well, I'll ask Kevin if he can come two weeks from tonight. If you don't mind, Kevin, just to put our heads together and bring you up to speed again. Right? If you recall, we ponied up along with Cohasset for some preliminary faze for them to get the okay to go ahead, so. Be happy to.
Thank you. Is that it, Al?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda for scheduled items is recognition of Kim Stewart, our Animal Control Officer. Kim, if you'd like to come up. I'm so proud of you.
For the elect.
And Chief, would you like to share with us?
I would, because, you know, I'll never get this opportunity again, because she's never gonna give it to me.
And there are a lot of folks in the room, for the TV viewing audience here, to support Kim in this.
On behalf of the department, I can't tell you how proud we are of Kim. This was a very well-deserved and earned award. And, you know, of course, we knew nothing about it until after the fact, as did the board. But that just speaks for, you know, the type of person Kim is. She's not about recognition. She's just about doing her job and doing it very well. What I want to take the time to do is just explain to the board even, you know, what an asset she is to the Police Department. There's not, a week goes by that she isn't put into service in some other capacity. She'll be up in her office, she'll hear something going on, and whether it's the need for another set of ears in the dispatch center, or something has to be set up for a meeting in the station, or, you know, we need a roadblock somewhere. And without having to be asked, she just goes and does the stuff. And it doesn't go unrecognized, but you can't acknowledge her for it, because she doesn't like that. But, you know, her volunteer work as, you know, with the Police Department, from, you know, tours of the new facility, to the public safety days that we had out back here for the kids, to the police officers and their raising money and gathering up toys for kids for Christmas, to the golf tournament, to the yard sale, to her work with sands. It's just, it's incredible. She doesn't know how to say no. And the, she's the first one to volunteer, and she's the last one to leave.
Yeah.
And this is on a regular basis. And, you know, I just want to take this opportunity to tell her how much we respect her and love her and appreciate what she does for the Situate Police Department.
That's great. And just before you talk, let's tell everybody what you won. So, you don't have to talk.[733.12][733.12](Laughter). Kim was awarded the 2017 Animal Control Officer of the Year for the State of Massachusetts. So...[742.56][742.56](Applause).
She does their job alone, so, right? So it's from the support of everyone at the station that, they always, always support me. The leadership team at the Police Department is unbelievable. The officers are unbelievable. The dispatchers, huge. I mean, they deserve this as much as I do, so I couldn't have done it without them. So, thank you.
Well, congratulations. We're very proud of you and so happy that you came in, in public to receive this, so we could all commend you. You do a great job in taking care of everybody beyond just our furry friends, so, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Thank you, chief.[795.12][795.12](Applause).
Hey, Mike. Can we get old Mike back out on some details? I miss him.
He's a little beyond the age, Phil. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next is the interview for board and committee appointments for the Sister City Souci En Brie Committee. Is Anita here?
Yes.
Hi, Anita. How are you this evening? So I think tonight we have to renew some appointments, but you are new, joining the committee. So if you wouldn't mind just sharing a little bit about yourself, and I think just, you know, what you think you can contribute to the committee, and thank you for coming in.
Okay, thank you. I've actually been working with the committee for several years now. I started getting involved because I went on the Souci exchange for the adults and just loved it. It was wonderful. And I hosted a couple here and got very involved after that with many of the other things that the committee has brought to town. So I've hosted teenagers who came from France to learn to speak English. I recently hosted a chaperone who came with the group this summer and his family. And I've been active in helping Pat Chikart do all kinds of events that we've had at the Maritime Center. So I'm kind of an unofficial member, but I haven't officially become a member, so I thought that it was time to do that. I know that we now have another sister city that we're working on with Ireland, and I'm gonna be part of that sister city project as well, if this works out.
Well, thank you for making it official. It sounds like, it sounds like you're doing quite a bit for us today, and it's such a great committee, and I, you know, thank you for hosting. You know, we can't survive with a sister city relationship like this without hosting these chaperones and these kids that come over, and it's just a great opportunity for us to exchange different cultural, you know, experiences, and it's great, so thank you.
You're welcome. I've enjoyed it. There's nothing better than getting to know people from different cultures and being able to live with them. It's, I hope everybody tries it sometime, because it's a great experience.
It's great. Sean, did you have any questions? I know you're the...
No, I'll vote for you. I'll tell you. You can get on.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up and doing it.
Okay, you're welcome.
Anyone else?
I should just say, I've known Anita Hearn a husband for a few years, quite a few years now, and, you know, I think, wonderful asset, and just wanted to thank you for doing exactly what Mara said, stepping up. But if it wasn't for the people, the folks that wouldn't do that, it would be a challenge. Wouldn't work. Yeah, that's right.
It's my pleasure, actually. I get a lot out of it too, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Do you speak French?
We, in Per.
Do you?
Yes, I do.
Oh. Then you should come to Souci with us next time.
Not that well.
We'll remember that. So if we don't have any other additional questions for Anita, you're free to go. We'll do the vote later on in the evening.
Okay.
I don't think there are any issues.
Can I take a risk and make the vote now?
And move it?
Sure.
Yeah, we can go through that, that's fine.
Okay.
We'll do it now. That way you can go home and rest.
Can I make it up, or is it, is there a verb you're supposed to use? Make a motion to appoint Anita Hearn to the Souci En Brie Committee for a term of three years?
Or until a replacement is...
Or until a replacement is appointed?
When she completes the...
And she completes?
That's like a conflict of interest. It's an online conflict of interest.
Is it written yet?
It's a program that'll tell you about conflicts, and they'll put you through, and if you make a mistake, you go back, reread it, and then they'll answer the same question.
Oh, okay. And do I get a link for that, or do I?
Yes.
Someone will send me a link?
Lorraine, I'll give it to you.
Oh, okay.
In the next couple of days, and you'll go and get sworn in at the time where we're required to wear it.
Okay, that's fine. I didn't know there were more things. Yes, very official.
And just to complete that, and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law Online Training Program is completed within 30 days.
Second. Second by Mrs. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'll just rattle off the rest of them while we're going at it. Move to appoint Anne Marie Jean to Souci En Brie Sister City Committee for a term of three years, or until success is named, and completion of a Conflict of Interest Law's Online Training Program within 30 days.
Moved by Mr. Vignani. Second. Second by Mrs. Canfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I do these all at once? I think they're all the same, so I'm gonna combine them. Move to appoint Emily Green, Peter Lincoln, Suzanne Lincoln, Patricia Chikar, and Nicole Joie. Is that how you say that?
Joie.
Joie. My French isn't that good. To the Sister Souci En Brie Committee for a term of three years, or until success is named, and completion of a Conflict of Interest Law Training Program within 30 days.
Moved by Mr. Vignani. Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for renewing. It's a great project. They're all consecutive? I mean, they're all, they're not staggered these terms? Just curious.
No.
You'd like a stagger?
Just a lot of them, Mara.
Need to lock them in.
Do we have to wait till exactly 7:30 for the next?
I think you should.
Since it's a hearing? No?
I think we do.
I think it should.
I think you do, too.
It's not something that was publicized in the newspaper. I checked with our attorney.
Oh, really?
Okay.
It's a liquor license violation, and I'm not publicizing it.
Okay. So, next on the agenda is a discussion vote for a liquor license violation for the 7-Eleven. Is anybody here with regards to representing?
Police officers.
Okay.
Sergeant O'Brien?
So Sergeant O'Brien, did you want to come forward? Thank you.
Officer Billings with me also. He was present with me that evening.
Thank you.
Just explain what happened?
Yeah. Thank you.
On Friday evening, September 29th, I was working a regular patrol shift of 4:00 PM to midnight. At the same time, Detective Sergeant Nord, along with Officer Billings, was directing a, directed patrol for underage alcohol enforcement that we get from the state once a year. One point during the night, Officer Billings, Officer McCauley, and Officer Kitchens observed two young men walk into the 7-Eleven, and shortly afterwards walked back out. One individual had two .30 packs of Bud Light. Officer Kitchens in a low-profile cruiser got behind them, observed in addition that there was a brake light out, so he pulled it over for the defective equipment. All officers, Officer McCauley and Officer Billings responded to the scene. They talked to the driver and the operator in the backseat with the .30 packs. They asked how they acquired them. The passenger, who was a juvenile, said he was able to purchase them with this form of identification. He handed the identification to the officers. They called me to come to the scene in my role as the alcohol enforcement officer. I arrived. I went to 7-Eleven afterwards. I spoke to the manager, explained to her why I was there, and then I spoke with the employee.
And did they admit to...
I, the, I spoke to the juvenile that was arrested. I asked him what had occurred. He said, "He brought the alcohol up, was asked for identification, gave the counterfeit identification." I asked him if he was asked for any backup identification. He said, "No." He was able to purchase it. I, when I was speaking with the manager, and then the employee, the employee really didn't speak to me at all. She just remained very quiet as I was talking to her, but I could tell by her facial expressions, she was shocked and, you know, apologetic of what had occurred, but she didn't say any words to me at all.
So no evidence of them having that software installed to detect fake IDs?
Correct. Correct. But in this particular matter, in this particular case, where the ID, there is, there is a scanner there, I believe, but it was never scanned, it was just looked at. But this particular identification, on a side note, I did bring it by one establishment today that has an older type of scanner. This identification did work.
Really?
And they brought it by another establishment, which has an up-to-date scanner, the one that we all speak of, and it was rejected.
So just to confirm, you tested it on a type of scanner that they have installed?
Correct. I'm not, I don't know if it's the exact one they have, but it's not the...
It's similar.
Yeah, not the one that is, I don't know what word to use, but the one that would...
It's widely used.
That's more outdated and has better software to detect fraudulent ones.
So does that have the hologram?
Yes.
The, the sales clerk, they have, they have trained, they're trained, obviously, and...
Correct. Correct.
And this particular woman was?
I'm not exactly sure. Officer Billings conducted a training with a large amount of employees from, a lot in, a large amount of establishments from around here, Hingham and Norwell. I don't know if this woman attended.
I'm not sure if she was actually at that training, but all employees should be trained if they are working behind the counter where alcohol is being sold.
Can I ask?
Yes, sir.
I was just gonna ask, if it's all right, normal, can we have the folks from the store come up?
Please.
If they're here, if they're comfortable coming up, rather than have to wait to respond and...
Just your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, gentlemen, I'm Brian Gilman. Court Day, Phillips Street, Hanson.
Let's have a load on again, it wrote.
Okay. Welcome.
I sent three that I knew were staying in our store. It was right before the summer. I sent three to that.
The fax training?
Yeah. She was still training on register, the one that was on shift that night. That's the only reason why she wasn't one of them that was sent, because she didn't even know the register yet. So it was obviously...
And if I could speak to the ID, from what I'm understanding, from the research that we've done since this, and I asked Mr. O'Brien on Friday when we talked, that ID is actually that kid's picture. They're using their picture and their name and buying these IDs online. And they're scanning on systems, besides the, this new one that the Coalition offers. We had spoken to the lady in the middle of the summer about possibly buying that anyways, but these kids, like, it's their, their name, their picture. And it's a scannable ID they're scanning. Because we're finding out from our beer reps and stuff, that's like the new thing going around right now.
So it's not like the older brother or older sister, like, it's them?
They're not expired, like, they're legit.
So even with backup, is the, their name, it's a debit or credit card, so we'd still have all of his information? So the next best thing would be the scanner?
So if they'd asked for secondary, they would have had it?
Yes.
Right. But I guess he actually didn't. We, he had mentioned that he didn't have it, but I have...
Was it scanned?
It wasn't.
It was not.
You didn't even scan it on your system?
She did not. So I already have an email out to Barbara, Quinlan, already looking into, I mean, I think the lower-grade ones, I don't think they're good enough. They may be, but I think that how good those are, you, you have to get the premium scanner, because, I mean, they're really good.
And do you have a lower-grade scanner in place today?
Our register will scan it.
Yeah, our register will scan it.
Okay.
And that would scan... And that wouldn't scan...
It would probably pass.
Okay.
But this is all new, like, how good they are, like, it's not their cousin or someone that looks like them. It's them, and that's really, really scary.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Jerry O'Taylor, could you tell by looking at that, that that's no, that that's not legitimate? Because I can't tell.
I cannot, also.
Right. So you need to put it into a system.
Right. Like, the only way you can tell is by that scanner. Why, you know, when I go to the training once a year, it's, the people at the ABCC speak about this organization that they're marketing these and they just move from website to website to location to location every time the federal government's catching up to them. I mean, so yeah, the only way to defeat that is buy that new up-to-date scanner.
Which we did talk about, but it's, you know, it's like forty-five hundred dollars. It's expensive. So it's something that, as a family business, like, you have to...
And as far as we know, I think only two stores in town have it, I think. I'm not even sure about it.
If I go into any restaurant, TK O'Malley, so to, to any one of them and present that, they don't, that's, they're going to look at that, and that's legitimate to you, it's going to be legitimate to any bartender, that's...
Yeah, I think at some point we've got to figure out how to ensure that everybody, everybody has the most updated technology in town.
That's our plan. I did reach out, I did email her. We weren't really sure what exactly happened until after the fact, we saw everything in the paper, because we weren't, I mean, our staff told us one thing and wait to hear. So when I read it, I was, I was really surprised with her, because she was really good at IDing. I texted her right away, like, I don't understand what happened, because originally I thought, you know, just, I don't know.
So did she end up doing the training yet, or is she unscheduled to do it?
She's no longer with us. She, she didn't ask for backup. That's my policy.
And then we immediately stopped taking out of state IDs, just because of this whole situation, so we can get this scanner in the store. And even then, we're not sure what we're going to do about out of states, because I guess the mass ID is really hard for them to duplicate on that, whatever websites they're using. So they're using out of states that we're not even accepting anymore.
So where is this, does this person, right, I see it's Maryland, that person, I'm not mentioning the names, but does that person live locally?
Yes.
Yeah.
Wow.
Not in this town.
Yeah, right, right. And they couldn't do that and have, have it say Massachusetts?
Right. Yeah, the people that are doing the organization is doing it, ironically enough, is having a tough time mimicking the Massachusetts.
Right.
Karen, did you have any other questions?
No, that was, that was all.
Thank you. Tony?
Yeah, I mean, I sympathize with you that it was a tough ID to catch, but you didn't train the person and they didn't scan it in the scanner. And when you guys first came in here, we said that this is the most important thing and that, you know, this is very, very important to us and you've got to make sure that this happens. I mean, those are two things that, that should have happened. I don't know if it would have caught her, caught this ID or not, it may ever or may wouldn't, but, but the fact that they didn't do those two things is a big concern to mine. You know, the, the new system is much better. We've, everyone that comes before us, we suggest that you get it, because it's going to save you from getting shut down for days, which is what's going to happen when, when things like this happen. So I don't, again, I sympathize with the fact that it was a tough ID to catch, but, but the scanner may have caught it. I don't know, we didn't put it in that scanner, right?
Right. Yeah, I put it in the, one of those scanners, one of those two establishments, boy, it came here, and it came up big axel.
Right, under the, under the newer one, but we don't, your other, your one might have caught it, we just don't know. But there was another old one that didn't. So I, you know, we just stress it with every time we give someone a liquor license, that this is the most important thing, this can't happen. We don't want our establishments serving kids, and we need to take every precaution possible to do it. So, I mean, I don't know where we're going to come, come down with the penalty, but it's, somehow we've got to get to the point where it's not going to happen again. And I understand you're looking into the software and, and you're looking to investment, it's a big investment.
We're committed. Yeah, I mean, we're committed to getting it.
This is, the one thing, I will say, I was just talking to John about it, the store has had many violations in the past, but not, this is the first one since you've been owners, is that correct?
No.
Okay, so I misread that, so is this the second one?
Third.
This is the third violation?
We haven't had anything in six years.
We're actually at the fourth.
No, it's not the fourth.
They're all under the package.
Yeah, I was having a problem. All right, so why don't you explain to me then, so this is the third or fourth one in the six years that you've owned the store?
We've owned the store for eight, and we've had this to be the third.
The third.
There was one prior to when they bought it.
Yeah, the owner before us definitely had something.
Yeah, that's how this reads out.
So, but this, and for us, we feel like we're a victim of a kid that had a fake ID that's actually a real ID that scans, and that he just happened to come into our store that day.
So I think the issue I have is this, how important is the alcohol, the beer and wine license to you folks?
Extremely. Thirty percent of our business, and I, I figured as much.
Which means that you've got to put the money and the investment to ensure...
Yeah.
Let me finish. To ensure, hold on. To ensure that this doesn't happen, I remember when you first came in with Tony, the first thing we said was, there'd been a prior violation of, I guess it's underage, it was during a sting operation, and prior owner had been caught, and so we made it abundantly clear that this was a serious issue. And the reason why it's a serious issue is because aside from a lot of the addictive other drugs that are confronting all communities, including our own, alcohol had been a major issue in this community years prior, still is. And one of the biggest issues I see is underage drinking, is that they're always looking for a place to find the opportunity to gain it. And I, you know, as a kid, I'm sure everybody's sitting here watching TV, once you know that there's a place where you can get it, that's the place people are going to go. So the difficulty that I have is, is that there's been a violation in 2010, 2011, and now this time. And, you know, I think to Tony's point, whether or not the card would have been caught, if you had scanned it, it wasn't scanned.
Yeah.
That's training. And if it hadn't been caught, I think if it's such an important component of your business, you've got to make sure that you have the up-to-date scanning equipment. I know that's a cost. It's a business, a cost of doing business, but it's important to your business, because it's a significant percentage. And I say that because we've had prior violation with a store here in town, and it was of significant cost to them. And so they invested the time, and now they literally go and scan every card, anybody who buys, to the annoyance of the purchasers, to the customers. But that's because it's such an important component of their business that they ensure that, you know, compliance is made. Because if somebody walks out of there and they've scanned it through the gas, then I would say, then you try to do everything you possibly can. I can't say the same has been here. And my problem is, is that this wasn't under the control by, in other words, it wasn't like a, the police or the ABCC trying to do a sting to test to make sure that you're compliant. This was an actual underage individual, I'm not sure if he's local or not, but clearly somewhere in the area, who bought it. And but for the observations, this wouldn't be here before us, which begs the question, how many other out-of-state licenses have you seen? Do you have any regular alcohol licenses? Because that's for you to understand, because obviously that would probably be a mark for people coming in and saying, that's why we're going there, because it's functioning there. So to me, that's the issue that I'm looking at. And, you know, our problem is, is that we're trying to set policy when we, we say to them, when you come in for a new business, to say we want that alcohol, or we want the beer and wine license. We try to enforce that right up front. Listen, this is a really serious issue. Make sure you don't come before us again, because, you know, we're going to be hard on it. We have to be. So, again, I know it's not easy, it's a cost of doing business, it's very expensive, but our only way of enforcing it is by saying, you've got to say, lose it a little bit. Question is, how long? We had somebody not far from you lose it for a full day, because they'd sold to an underage person. So, you know, not trying to be mean and be the bad guys, but you've actually put us in this position to have to come back and say, you're going to have to do something, because what you did wasn't good enough.
Can I just respond to that for a second? Absolutely. You know, the thing about, like, you know, us maybe even having a reputation of selling to minors, like, I don't, I don't think that's, that exists. I think we may even ask the police, I think we do a very good job. We ID forty and under all the time, we have customers that are regulars that get IDed every time, because of a violation that we had before. But they've been six years without anything. We've been there for over eight, we've never had a tobacco violation, a lottery violation. And I think any other store in town, we have probably more, we have more kids underage coming into our store on a regular basis than anybody in town. So I think on a percentage basis, like, we are very vigilant in what we do in our ID. And that ID that you have, like, we haven't, that's like a new software thing that these kids are getting, like, that's a real ID. And even if she did scan, it would have scanned, it would have passed through. I think they just chose our store. I don't think they chose our store, I think it was just random, and it just happened to be us. I don't think we were targeted because we sell to a minor. Like, I don't think that's...
Because we don't have a lot of out-of-states, we don't have a lot of, like, that typical twenty-one to twenty-three look at people. We don't really have a lot of that. I mean, we have now have kids with Slurpees, but not so much. You know, I mean, I, I don't think it's a problem, I think...
But we did ID, and the person misrepresented himself. He broke the law of coming into our store and showing an ID that's saying he's an adult. And as far as I know, he's, you know, going to just go into a diversion program and that's it. And he's standing there.
Well, that could, that's very, that's true, but that's, that's for him, to his, his penalty, if you will, he's going to have to pay. But we are the liquor license branding board, and in our focus, because we don't have control, no jurisdiction if you're over, aspect, but ours is what we give out to people, so that we give it responsibly, and, and that's where we have to determine whether it was done fairly or not. And my issue I have is, this isn't your first, if it were your first, then I'd be more inclined to say warning. I think if it were under a controlled situation, sting, I'd, I'd be a little less, because obviously, but this is an actual, they found somebody, they, two thirty packs. I don't even know what the age of the individual was, eighteen and seventeen. You know, they're clearly not going too far. There must have been a party or something going on. And so to me, that's a very serious issue. And, and again, I'm not saying that you are known, please, I'm just saying that knowing kids, we all have that, people will say, at some point, if you know you can get something, when you're probably not supposed to, that, for some circles, it circulates. Whether that's the case or not, I don't know. So I apologize if you took that it that way, but I'm just saying, that's my concern for, for our kids in this area, because we don't want them to gain access to it here.
And it's not the cost of the scanner. It was just brought to our attention in June when we sent three people to that class, and that's where the scanner got brought up. So for us, like, we were in the middle of a transition of Tedeski's over to 7-Eleven in the middle of the summer, so we didn't want to bring in a new piece of equipment until, we wanted to evaluate ourselves as the owners. And like I said, only two people in town even have that. So we're willing to do it, but obviously this is the new thing, so we're reacting to this new situation, these...
And immediately, immediately, I took down, I mean, I have my old signs that were...
I think there's probably three, because the two...
There's at least...
There's at least three. The one that set the standard, the two other people who violated it, to my knowledge, I know one of them, I have not been back to see them, the other one who violated it, but I think they actually set it up also. But again, I'm just only saying that.
But the moment we did hear, I, I have my old policy that says what the policy is, we took that down. Right away, it's just mass drivers license, and you can see them all through my store. So it, it, you know, him and I were like, oh my God, because then we started hearing the rumors that they're really good. Well, I just want to take...
So do you have the scanner in place now?
Not yet. I sent out an email to Barbara.
No, we reached out as soon as we talked to...
But it happened a month and a half ago.
We didn't know, well, we read what was in the paper, but we didn't talk to anybody until Friday.
We didn't get much information on that.
Because we couldn't get the police report or the ID or anything, because he's a minor.
You didn't know that a miner bought the alcohol from your store that day?
No, we knew that day.
But, and you knew there was a scanner that solved it? That was better technology for it?
Well, no, we didn't know that until last week, that they actually were scanning. So it...
And when are you getting it?
I sent out an email on, after we talked to O'Brien, and actually found out, you know, because this isn't a police report, we needed a little more information.
No, when are you getting the scanner?
Update.
And she responds to our email, or, I don't know, the lady that's in charge or that we had a contact with hasn't responded to our email that we sent last week.
Because there are at least three or four places in town that have it.
Yeah, we just, and we...
You guys have to know that.
Well, I think what you're looking for is fax, I think, actually helps you supplement the cost of it. Is that what they do? Is that why you're reaching out to them? Okay.
They're counting the price for it.
Yeah, there was a group, I think she was able to get, she, I guess she had a good model, and it was like the chosen one that would kind of...
Scan all these IDs.
Right.
Tony, I gave Barbara, over the summer, I gave her all the information for that new scanner. I got all the paperwork on it, where to purchase it, contact, stuff like that.
Right.
So I believe she's telling other establishments that, you know, when, when they want to get it, contact her, she has all the information.
In the summer?
Yeah. Well, that's, that's when I gave it to you, yes. Whenever that training was, it...
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. So I think what we have to decide is, you know, I think there's going to be some sort of penalty. There are a couple of different guidelines and things that we have in front of us.
Can we just go through the history real quick in terms of...
Yeah.
So, and Lauren, correct me if I'm wrong, so there's been three violations. There was a violation in '07, which is when you didn't own it.
Right.
Then you came on in 2010, or when did you buy it?
Nine, 2009.
In '09. And so a year into it, in 2010, there was a violation, which we gave you a three-day suspension, but we waived it and said, as long as you don't have anything for a couple of years, you wouldn't have to serve it. Is that correct?
The first one, I think, was with this...
Oh, that, that was the state.
Maybe the ABCC, the state.
Mm-hmm.
So you, the state suspended you, is that, that's what the state did then?
They gave us, I think, a probational...
Three-day, and they, okay. Then a year later, you had another violation, and you came before us, and we suspended your license for seven days?
Right.
And eleven. And now there's this one in seventeen.
Six years.
Six years later.
Mm-hmm.
The difference being, yeah, I mean, they showed an ID that Jerry and all of us wouldn't, and I know they had the equipment, but this...
It's not like we didn't ID, like, we didn't...
To John's point, I mean, he's, he's, you know, the, the other one was really...
Yeah, but did I get, there's, there's a scanner, within, not the scanner we're talking about. You have within your store an ability to scan the ID, but the clerk didn't even scan it, correct?
Had, right, and had they had scanned it, it may have passed that one.
We don't know that one.
No, but Jerry, did you say you went to one possibly similar, and it passed it, you went to another one, an updated scanner, and it, and it made it very clear it was, right?
So she did not scan it?
Did not scan it.
She just looked at the identification.
Got it. That's game changer.
And she wasn't, and she wasn't tip certified.
She was not. But you've dismissed her.
How long did she work there?
Like...
Right until the summer, we hired her in the spring.
So four months?
She's been there for a while.
Five months.
So when do you typically tip certify them?
Well, so Tedeski's would send out an email first, and they would have, like, a class. So we would send them in groups. So we just sent the first three that we knew were staying, one of them being my son. Our son's nineteen, so he's tip certified, and there's two others that were staying on. She was almost too new to the register that...
No, I know, but she worked there for four months and was never certified.
No, we have, well, we have in-house classes on computer in, in our store, ID and things like that, that we do for tobacco and alcohol.
So what's your policy now when you have a new employee? When do you certify them?
Right away.
Now, it's right away.
Right away.
They've had a new employee since the spring.
So, and you did say you dismissed that employee?
Yeah.
Yeah, the only, and that was because, right away, immediately, you decided to stop taking out of states.
Yeah.
She, the next week was still going to do an out-of-state.
So for me, that was a little bit of a game changer. I thought she had scanned it, and it passed that scanner. But if she was there for four months, she didn't scan it, she wasn't properly trained, in my opinion, there, there's, there's some culpability here that, you know, we need to do something. And I appreciate that you're looking forward to get that new scanner, because as we all say, it's, it seems to be the only one out there that can keep up with all this new technology. And I understand it's not in your control with what China does with all of these IDs, and the kids go get them, I, I understand that, but we've got to stay ahead of it, as John had alluded to earlier, to keep our kids safe. I think some of the penalties here, in my personal opinion, are too extreme. You know, we've got thirty days in front of us, we've got fifteen days. Three years ago, it was seven days, right? Not three years ago, six years ago.
Six years.
It was seven days.
But that was, I'm sorry, that was within a year, they had a violation within a year?
Well, I just want to give a little context, you know, when the, another violator who had violated it three times, one was in 2008, the other was in 2009, and then finally, they came back in front of us in 2016, we gave them 10-day suspension. And that was the bottom line. We told them specifically, the bottom line was, they had sold to underage, and, you know, their responsibility, even though they'd been old, was that, you know, we demanded that they, they take the responsibility for it. And they did.
They didn't ID at all, just on that third violation.
Again, I appreciate you, no, hold on. I appreciate what you're trying to do. I know it's your business, and you're trying to avoid us from penalizing you. But my problem is, this is the third time under your ownership, and I understand you tried to card them, but the card didn't even go through, it didn't even go through the scanner. You didn't even have a person who was selling alcohol, beer or wine is what it is, across the counter, not even tip certified, for four months. And I realize that's a difficult thing for you to hear, but my feeling is, I don't have any sympathy for you. Because a 20-year-old and an 18-year-old or a 17-year-old were caught with two 30-packs in the back of their car. What if they'd gone at the two of them, I don't know, were there four people in the car, three people?
Two, two.
Two of them. What if they drank one of them, drove off the road and killed themselves? Then you'd be looking at a lot bigger penalty with a lawsuit. And then we'd be sitting here going, well, we let you off on it. And I mean, my feeling on it is, I'm sorry, but you're lucky nobody got hurt. And if the penalty is money, so be it. I feel 10 days is more than reasonable, given the track record of this board, listening to what you said, trying to give you some flexibility here. But I'm sorry, I have no other, I feel no sympathy for your situation. Go out and buy an iris scanner, that's up to you. If you don't, you don't. But if you show up in front of here while I'm on the board, I can tell you, I'd probably say you're not going to get another liquor license while I'm on the board. And I'm going to be hard, because you know what? This is a serious issue with our youth. And if somebody gets injured, somebody gets hit in another car because they were drinking, that's on you. And it's going to be on this board for not doing anything. And I think we need to set an example, like we said, to the other people, whether it was the Village Market, or whether it was the winery, or anybody else who comes before this board. You have a license. It's not a guarantee. It's not a privilege. It's an honor to be able to serve it. Do it, do it right, do the best you can. I don't think you did the best you did. So consequently, like a parent, we're going to have to say, here's the penalty. And I think 10 days is more than reasonable.
First vote will be to determine if a liquor law violation occurred.
Good.
And then the second vote will be to determine what, maybe it's a-
Right.
Well, I think, are we ready? Do I have a motion to determine that a liquor license violation did occur? We can get that done.
Yeah.
Is there-
Move that liquor license violation did occur.
Second.
Well, right, on- Will the Board of Selectmen find that a liquor license violation occurred on Friday, September 29, 2017, at JBNJ Foods Incorporated doing business as 7-Eleven?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Harris, second by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, I agree with John for consistency's sake. You know, again, I've said it a couple of times, the game changer for me was that the employee was there for four months and didn't even scan it. You know, had she scanned it, and it passed the scanner because the scanner wasn't up to date, that's a whole nother issue. So, for me, I tend to agree with John that the 10 days is adequate. Additional commentary?
Yeah, I mean, the one other component of this is, I think, you've got to get, you've got to get better technology to track this, so it doesn't happen again. I mean, we know it, you not being able to sell liquor in your store for a week or 10 days is a hardship. It's hard. That's not what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is get you guys to not serve minors, and you've got to use whatever tools are available to you so it doesn't happen. And unfortunately, it's happened three times. And that is a bit of a trend. So, you know, we have, we have policies from our town and other towns that would penalize you a lot, a lot stricter than what John is suggesting. I think I could live with the 10 days also, as long as you, we're going to move forward and get better technology to scan the equipment and get your people tip certified within a reasonable amount of time of them working there. I think-
What did we take it for? Seven days and 11? Is that what it was?
Yes.
And I think part of, if I remember correctly, part of that was because you didn't serve anything on the first one, because it was, it was waived. I think that was kind of our rationale on that.
I just had a difficult time. A license was shown, but it's a legitimate license. Yeah, it might be out-of-state, but is it the policy of your store that you don't take out-of-state licenses? Or Jerry or Taylor, is it the law that we can't take out-of-state licenses?
No, the law.
Okay, so that's your store policy. So, perfectly legal, if that was legitimate, to use an out-of-state license. That's a tough, that's, it's hard. It's, I've often said, it's a different setting. The lighting, it's a whole different license. You go into a restaurant or something, and you produce that. That's, that's hard to, you know, catch. I mean, there's no way of catching it.
It's that clerk's job, when someone comes up there with alcohol.
So's the bartender's job.
To, and the bartender's job.
That's right.
To make sure that that's a legitimate license.
If they didn't show a license, I would say, take the liquor license back. You, you know, don't deserve it. You shouldn't have it. I understand what John said, you know, it's, the idea of going down, it could cause harm to anybody. It's, well, something has to be done, but it's just, it's a different circumstance now that they've, you know, produced a legitimate license, in my opinion.
Well, people have had fake IDs forever.
Not like they're in that business.
That's just a course of-
Technology.
Yeah.
The old days, they would cut them off and then paint them, and then seal them. And, you know, so, the bar's raised.
Karen?
I agree that, you know, it is very serious that our board enforce what we're supposed to enforce, to protect the kids. That's the number one thing. I, I only hesitate to the severity of the punishment in two regards. One is that I think the technology has outpaced, and that you, you know, that, we don't require everyone to get this. It's in your interest, obviously, to get the new whiz-bang way to try to determine it. It is very concerning that you had somebody on staff that long that wasn't properly trained. And I agree that, you know, there certainly needs to be acknowledgement of that. That you've changed your policy, and that you dismiss this person, I think speaks to your intent, and I, I agree. I would also say that having not had a violation for six years, to me demonstrates that they've been diligent in enforcing, or, you know, at least as far as we know, their responsibility. So, I would think that, you know, we've got all this data about what other towns do. We don't have a policy in town so that we can say this is what we do every time. So, there is discretion. I might think that 10 days is a bit, given the length of time since the last violation. I definitely think you should have a penalty. But, you know, I, I look at some of these, and, you know, a second offense is, you know, five to seven days in a lot of towns, and I'd be more inclined to go into that direction for those reasons.
But this is a third offense.
This is a third.
It is a third offense, but it's a third offense after six years, and the technology has changed dramatically. I think, had, had the woman been trained and scanned it, I would feel even more so that, okay, you know, they're, they've got to keep up the technology. But-
Locked out with 60 beers.
Yeah.
This wasn't a six-pack. This was two 30-packs.
Right. And I think this would be a penalty.
Any additional thoughts, comments? I mean, I hope you can see that we, we try to deliberate this pretty extensively, because we, we are concerned about your business, but we have to take the safety of the minors first and foremost as well. And ultimately, that is taking your best interest and putting that, putting that first as well.
Our son's 19. I get it. So.
I'll entertain a motion if there's one.
Sure. I'll move to implement a suspension, a 10-day suspension to, is it JBNJ Foods Inc. doing business as, it's not Tedeschi Food Shops anymore.
7-Eleven.
7-Eleven.
10-day suspension on the retail wine and malt beverage license held by JBNJ Foods.
Okay, doing business as 7-Eleven? I'll say, I'll strike that. I'll move to invoke a 10-day suspension of the retail wine and malt beverage license held by JBNJ Foods Inc. doing business as 7-Eleven, to be served from, starting tomorrow, Wednesday, November 8th, through and including Friday, November 17th, 2017.
Motion by Mr. Danahy.
Second.
A second by Mr. Vignani. Any further discussion?
I just think 10 days might be, maybe three days too much. That's all, so, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Same.
And we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Uh, no. Did we say aye? No? Yes.
Three to two, Lorraine.
Did you vote yes or no?
I did, yeah. I said aye. Three to two in favor of the 10-day suspension.
I'd like to move that we, have to read all that again, that we suspend for seven days.
We just, we lost.
You just, we can't.
We lost.
Oh, three to two. Sorry.
You can make a motion to reconsider.
Yes, yes, you could do that.
Yes, sorry.
Really?
We'd have to move to reconsider.
Yeah.
So-
Thank you for that tutorial, Mr. Danahy.
You can do it if you want. I don't know if that's what you're trying to do or not.
Do it.
I mean, I'm not trying to be cute here. If you're trying to say, if you want to reconsider, you have to put the motion. Somebody can second it, then we can discuss it.
Okay. I move to reconsider.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye, I'll reconsider.
I'll give you, I'll give you the reconsideration. Aye.
Okay.
What do you want to reconsider?
From now.
So, now I make the motion, or do I?
Nope. You have, I think you've pled your case.
Yeah. So, I move that the Board of Selectmen find that the-
But why?
Sorry?
We'll just talk about it now.
Why do you want to reduce it?
Discuss it.
Oh, as I said before, I think that, given the long time since they, I think they've been diligent for six years, and yes, it's a third violation, but it's not a violation that has occurred recently. And I think that technology has made it more difficult for them to do their job. So, I'm inclined to put it more as a second offense, and that would make it a shorter period.
And I too, I'll elaborate a little bit why I voted against it. Like I said, they produced a license. It's, it's, it's timed, you know, six years has gone by, and I just lost my train of thought. So, I should have written it down. I'll think of it in a second. But I, you know, something more like seven days, I would think.
So, their violation was seven days on their second violation?
Right. I realize that.
So, and I, I appreciate the comment about technology, but I think we have to remember that she didn't use the technology. So, it's a training issue for four months that, that, regardless of whether the technology is advanced or not, it wasn't used. And again, that's the deal breaker for me. I would have been more inclined to be a little bit more lenient had they used the technology and it stumped her, but that wasn't the case. So, I remain with my 10 days. And I also feel that it's important that we're consistent in the penalties that we apply to different establishments in town as well.
All right. Let me just say one, I thought of it. Training, okay? You know, at some point, at what point do you invest in, you know, I don't know the cost to send someone to this class, but, you know, I have to deal with that if I'm going to send someone to school to train, you know, at what point do you make that investment? So, I don't, I don't know if four months is a real, a long time. I don't know what's involved with the training, how long it takes. You pay them while they're training, and you take a gamble, and then they, then they leave, you know?
I, I'm sorry. On that one, though, I agree that it's, it shouldn't be a day. They shouldn't be selling liquor if they're not trained.
Well, they're trained in-house, from what I heard.
Yeah.
They're trained in-house, but-
So, we do both. So, we train in-house first, because there's a 7-Eleven program in the back office that shows pictures and all that stuff, and then just the basic training on the register. So, we usually go through all that first, because if they can't figure out the register, they're probably not going to work for me. So, it's usually, you know, there's steps you have to take, because it's, do you invest in someone to tips if they can't even ring in a candy bar? So, it's, you know, it's a process.
So, I, and I realize, each case is unique. Facts determine situations. And frankly, they probably determine and dictate the penalties, the results, the best way of looking at it. For consistency's sake, I'm not doing this just for consistency. I'm looking at a few things here. I think the fact that this was not a sting operation, it wasn't a controlled situation, that this was, while something was going on, police officers became aware of it, to me is a very big thing, because they happened to observe it, see it, thought something was unusual, yet the story didn't. Second, it was 30-pack, two 30-packs. Third, you got 17-year-old, 18-year-old, not a 21-year-old, not a 19, a 20-year-old, you know. And yeah, I know, 18-year-olds, 17-year-olds can kind of look like 20-year-olds, 21-year-olds, 22. The fact that it's an out-of-state license doesn't faze me at all, you know. I'm looking at this going, you decide to do what you want to do with your business. We're not telling you to go buy a scanner. That's up to you to decide. But there's a cost there, and that's a cost that you have to weigh. And, you know, in this case, there's a violation. There's an unknown cost that something's going to happen. Probably that someone's hadn't found out about this. Maybe nothing. Maybe it could have been a serious issue. To me, that's a big issue, because we don't know what could have happened. Thank heavens, nothing happened. And so, to me, that's a, that's a big issue. You know, I, again, I, the fact that they didn't even scan it, regardless of whether it worked or not, didn't matter. They didn't do it. And the fact that they weren't tip certified, to me, is even further incredulous, because, you know, maybe if they're tip certified, someone might say, wait a minute, I'm not sure about this. The person didn't know. They're just selling and buying. Yeah, I looked at the license, it looked good. Those are the old techniques that have failed abysmally. And this is not your first offense. This is your second offense. This is your third offense. So, I mean, at some point, we can give them six-year grace period and say, okay, let's bump it down to a two-year violation, and wait another six years and say, okay, we'll give you another violation in six years. But each time that happens, somebody can get hurt. And with respect to other businesses, aside from stores, if this is not a bartender, this is not a restaurant before us, we don't have that many that come before us, but let me tell you, I'll treat them the same way I'm treating you. You know, if there's a violation, they overserve, I'm also have to pull their license too. So, that's why I say, I'm like, it's a severe penalty. I know it is. I made the motion. But you've got to get the point. You're going to lose it next time. If it's a significant part of your business at 30%, then invest 30% of your effort to ensure that you're not going to lose it. Buy something that's going to make sure that it's going to protect you. So, that's, that's my problem, and I really want to consider the motion. I'm against it. I think 10 days is adequate. I think we've certainly done this before. And, you know, if the board wants to talk about a policy in the future, fine, but under our past performance, I think this is more than reasonable. Other towns do much more. And I think, you know, we're setting an example here, and hopefully, it won't happen again. Thank you.
Yeah, and it does, it does mimic the Village Market. They had three violations. Two were much five years or six years before the other one, and they got 10 days as well. I mean, again, the only I can say is, we don't, we don't want you to shut you down for 10 days. We just don't want you to serve minors. That's, that's our goal. So, you know, we all feel terrible about it, that, that we know it's affecting your income, and we know it's affecting your business. But-
And we can impose this during the next week, which is your big week, which is Thanksgiving week. And that's why I said start it tomorrow, so you can get it done before the Saturday of the, prior to Thanksgiving. We did it with Village Market during Super Bowl. So, they lost their business during Super Bowl. That was a big week for them. It's a big hit. So, my point is that we can pick another time, but I'm trying to do it now, get it done and over with, and move on.
All right. I don't think there's, is, there's not a motion. It was just a motion to reconsider, right?
Right.
That's all.
Now, you need a motion to, just like the motion we did before, to impose the 10-day suspension, if that's what you choose.
No, no.
Why? We already passed that.
No, but we reconsidered, so I think that-
We haven't voted on the reconsider.
All right, I'll make the motion again. I move to suspend for a period of 10 days. I want to get your name again, JB.
It's on page six, Joe.
I move to suspend for 10 days, the retail wine and malt beverage license held by JBNJ Foods Inc. doing business as 7-Eleven, for a period of 10 days, starting on Wednesday, November 8th, 2017, including up through into Friday, November 17th, 2017.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Danahy, second by Mr. Vignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Order one.
He can-
All right, well, thank you. And work with Barbara, and I know Barbara's working with us as well, so we can take a look at a policy in town to give folks a way to get that new technology quicker. So, we'll be looking at that too.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, will we get something in the mail, or, so, Lorraine, do they get anything official in the mail, suspending?
They'll get a letter from the FBI.
It's on record, though, that it starts tomorrow.
So, you'll have to coordinate off that area, tape it off or whatever.
A copy letter will be sent to the business owner, the ABCC.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Attention.
All right. Next on the agenda is to discuss and vote.
Thank you.
Bartending Services and Cocktails, Mr. Detremont?
Yes.
Would you like to come forward? How are you this evening?
How are you?
Great. Just your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Jim Detremont. I'm from 5-Nancet Road, Weymouth, Massachusetts. Name of the company is Cocktails LLC. It's owned by me and my wife. Been serving alcohol for 30 years. Started the company four years ago. So, if you have some questions- So, if you have some questions you might want to ask, I'll let you go from here.
Sure, and you're here to ask for approval to be on the list to be a bartender when events are happening at the Maritime Center and the GAR Hall?
Yep.
You have some good references here. You have tip certification.
Yes.
Everybody that works for you. As you can see, we take it pretty seriously.
Yes.
Yeah.
You had a tough act of fun.
I know, I was timing, not very good.
I will say this, we've certainly, you know, you're not the first to come to town to say, I'd like to do this. We've said, that's great, same thing we've done with other people, just we don't want you to be in a situation like the people working for you. That'd be awesome.
No.
You run your business, make sure you do it right, and everybody will be happy, at least on my end, and I'm like, that's, we're not here to micromanage you. You know what you're doing, do it the right way, and the Board's happy, the town's happy, you're happy.
You have my guarantee on that. And it was good to sit here and listen to everything back and forth because it gives me a little more insight from each town. Every town's different. And I'm sort of on the same agenda, where we take everything very seriously, and everybody will be tips, everybody is tip-certified before they even touch any type of alcohol. That's how it has to be. So, anybody that starts out training, alls they do is pick up glass and wash glass. When it comes to alcohol, they don't go near it. So, that's how we do it.
Great, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Detremont?
So, why, how are you coming here? Is there an event that you want to do here? Is that how you're trying to get on the list?
I've done some stuff at the Cohasset Lighthouse in the past. I did it years ago when I was there for a different company. So, I go around to all different towns. We cover from New Hampshire pretty much to the Rhode Island border. And a great part about my job is every time we go there, it's a party. But the good thing about the job is maintaining that it's a happy environment and a safe environment for everybody.
How many people work for you?
We have 35 bartenders right now. We have six managers. Everybody's, again, we do about 150 events a year. I did the Diva Dash in Marshfield a couple of years ago, about 3,500 runners. So, we do parties all over, sizes from, a few weeks ago, we did 1,700 people a day for three days in a row at Harvard University, which is a very interesting crowd.
How many do we have?
We only have, this would be the third for asserting alcohol. We have received a call from GAR Hall to say that we're interested in hiring cocktails LLC for upcoming events, and we've set a preparation for that, and we need to come in.
Correct.
The event date is set.
So, there is an actual event that you-
I got a request, and usually what I do is I'll go down and check out the location, see if it's safe, find out what policies I have to adhere to, because there's a lot of policies with every location. So, upon that, I did find out, and then I reached out to the town to see what I had to do to get on the list and make sure we're doing everything properly. Yep, thank you.
Sean?
So, you're just a bartending service, you don't offer catering at all?
Well, we, I partner with a lot of caterers, so my, I primarily focus on bartending, but I do work, I get a lot of business from caterers. Caterers don't want to really participate in bartending or liquor liability, so they hire me to do it. If you've been on my website, we're number one on the knot last year for weddings. It's a, it's an award that you get from, basically input from clients. I cannot manipulate, it's not family members. This year, we're on target again, which we take a lot of pride in, but a lot of that pride is, it's about the happiness, the safeness of the guest, if you read the reviews. And I think we're up like 52, which the second best is like 15. So, we do about 150 to 200 events a year. And on the South Shore, and this is like a nice target for me, most of my people or bartenders are on the South Shore, so it's easier for them to get here.
Great. Karen, did you have any questions?
No, I, I did look at the website, and the, and the recommendations are all stellar, so that's, that's great.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no additional questions, do I have a motion?
Move the Board of Selectmen to approve Cocktails LLC as an approved bartender for this town of Situate at the Maritime Center in GAR Hall.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Vignani, seconded by Mr. Danahue. Any additional questions?
No.
There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm sorry, I just have a question, because Tony just said GAR Hall, he didn't mention the Maritime Center.
Yeah, I did.
Yes, he did, he read it.
Okay, he did, okay, my hearing, I'm sorry, just want to make sure.
Nope, it's all set.
Thank you.
You're all set.
Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda is an update of the town administrator position. So, I can update everyone, we finalized the contract with Mr. Bedrow. So, Jim Bedrow needs to give his town 45 days' notice. So, he gave that notice, I want to say last Monday, to the town of Linfield. So, we're excited to welcome Mr. Bedrow on January 2nd in Situate, starting here full time. So, we look forward to it, and we congratulate Jim, it was a, it was a great process, and we look forward to working with him.
And Al, you're going to stay till about then?
Yeah, I'll be here. Pure me out.
Al, we appreciate it. Can't thank you enough.
Al, you're doing a great job.
Oh, thanks.
You really are.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
It's fun working with you.
We're a joy, we know.
No, it's great, thank you very much.
All right.
We appreciate Donna letting this happen to us. Thank you.
All right, so next is a discussion vote for the Ellis land swap. This is in response to our agreement with the Attorney General. And Al, one of his first things that he's been tasked to do when he came in was to try to identify some different pieces of land.
Thank you, I won't take all the credit for this, or I actually won't take much credit for this. The able staff at Town Hall has done a great job, the planning department, the assessors, in terms of looking at land which would be suitable and qualify for an appropriate swap. And I'm going to use one of the oldest techniques available, which is to use this 1930's stand here. So, I'm not sure if you can pick this up on the camera when I show these, will you be able to do that? Okay, great. All right, so, you asked that we look for land that would be suitable, 7.1 or so acres of land that could be used as a swap for the land used to build the Public Safety Building up at the corner of Manlot and Route 3A. So, the pieces of property that we found are quite attractive. Probably the one that is most adjacent to the Ellis property is the town forest. Now, you might think the town forest is actually in conservation, it's not. It was purchased in 1928 from a family, and it has never had a conservation restriction applied to it, nor has it been ever granted to the Conservation Commission. This piece of land is 20 acres. I would recommend we take a piece of it, seven, seven and a half, eight acres, and put it into conservation. It's high and dry, wooded, has trails on it already, abuts current conservational land, the Ellis property. It's opposite the Public Safety Building, has a small pull-off already for parking, it's readily accessible to the public, and there's probably no general appetite in town to do anything else with this nicely wooded, old legacy property. So, that's one choice.
Al, quick question on that?
Yes.
That yellow area, is that the 20 acres?
Yes.
This is 20 acres, of which we take a portion. We could either take a portion back here because it abuts other town land, the Fields land, yeah?
Yeah.
Or up in this area.
Great.
Okay.
One other question on that? The piece in the front there?
That sliver.
That sliver, yep.
This is actually, if you take out Route 3A, or Chief Justice Cushing Highway, the Ellis land actually goes across the street. So, this is Ellis property here. And as a matter of fact, some of the property here was part of the town forest land and was never in conservation. So, this notorious six acres of land that were taken from the Ellis estate really weren't all from the Ellis estate. Some of it was from town forests.
And where's the acre that we gave to, to the development swap?
Bill? Where's the acre we gave to?
Well, it's further to the north, Al. Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought, it's up there.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. You're not going to bill me, are you? All right, the second piece of property is a piece of property I'm calling Off Woodland Road. This is in the Egypt Park area near, everybody knows where the posty is, so I'll show you this map here. In this, we have the MBTA railroad tracks. Right up here is where Captain Pierce crosses, and Curtis Street comes in, the posty's up here. You go up, you turn, the highway department's up here, you turn and go down Woodland Road. And in the Egypt Park area, the town acquired in 2002 through a title-taking, thank you, Pam, probably predates you.
Yes.
Okay, well, took this land right here, it's accessible to the public through a paper street known as Nile Terrace. It's a little bit wet, it's 15 acres, and, but could have some nice walking trails that serves a different part of Situate population. It abuts other town land, and its alternate uses for the town are probably very limited.
And is the only access that yellow-
Paper street.
Paper street right there at all?
Yes, so, yes, it's all wooded. The whole, actually, the whole area, all this is wooded.
Okay.
And these lots here, which is a subdivision created, what, I guess, in the 60s maybe, or 50s, and are not buildable. So, they're in private ownership, no taxes are being paid on them. We just haven't gone through any process at this point to take that land.
Okay.
But, so, this is our land here.
Where is the nearest house when you go in north on Woodland?
Way up here.
There are a couple that were newly built, correct?
Yeah, but here's, here's Rose's lane coming in.
Okay, all right.
These are the two houses built, and then it starts to be wooded all the way around.
So, access, if you were to, you know, make that a paper street to a gravel access road, really isn't going to impact any butters or anything?
Correct.
Yeah, and it doesn't, we don't, we, it just has to be accessible by a path, really.
Right.
But you'd want to be able to, like what Frank was saying, you want to be able to park off the street?
Yeah.
If you wanted to walk the trail.
There's quite a bit of move in there, you could put some off-street pull-offs, you know, gravelled area, so.
That's nice for a different part of town.
It is, it's nice for a different group of people to be able to use it.
Also, you can put a conservation restriction on something and still put a well there, right? I believe?
Not there.
No.
There's no, no well there?
No. No, that's, that hasn't been considered for a well. The next piece is, I'll call this one Tac Factory Pond area. So, here is Route 3A, George, Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Down here is the roundabout, which we want to duplicate later up here. But anyway, then this is the reservoir and Tac Factory Pond. So, if you're going up 3A, this piece of land, this entire property here was taken in a tax title-taking, and then the town sold this lot with a house on it. We have here 12 acres of land. It's open fields with low shrubs, it abuts and protects the water supply.
No tax.
It abuts a lot of conservation land that ultimately comes out here on Old Oak and Bucket. The Conservation Commission is interested in developing this land, not developing, but rather using it for wooded trails and giving public access to it. In addition, we have a 50-foot access right here off of Route 3A.
Al, wasn't that-
We got this in 1999, yes?
Yeah, it wasn't a tax-taking, if I can remember correctly, it was to protect our drinking water. Forget the gentleman's name that convinced town meeting, Billy will know who I'm talking about. And then we, we put a restriction on a lot of that land and left the English Tudor, because we're afraid of a farm of some type could ruin it. But I don't think it was a tax-taking. I thought we, the town bought it.
Tax-taking was right next door.
Was it next door?
It's the lot's other related to it.
All right.
That's the one. That was the tax. Okay, all right, but, okay, got it. Nonetheless, we have required this area. It's, it may have other uses, it's a nice open area, it's fairly wooded, swampy down here, or it's, you know, wet.
Where's the antique cape?
But the majority of it is upland and could be suitable for a ball field.
Where's the antique cape that we all know? That's right before the body of water.
Right next to the reservoir, it should be up there. Right here?
All right.
The furniture up front?
That's correct, right, that one, right.
This is Greg's lane, which has been abandoned. This is Route 3A, okay?
And most of that's dry?
Uh, yeah, there's, there's more than seven acres dry in there.
Okay, okay.
And then the last piece is off of Clap Road. We could take a portion of this property. This is land that was acquired, starting in 82, several parcels were started in 82, and then in 2016, there was a land swap with Livingston Properties for purposes, their purposes. And then they swapped and gave us, sold us, or traded us this big yellow area here, which is 30 or so, 35 acres of land. So, there's access to it here off of Clap Road, there's access to it here off of Clap Road. A lot of this property is high and dry, there are some wetlands in various locations on it. This is an area that has been discussed as an opportunity for development of playing fields in the future. But we could take a piece of it, seven plus acres, and convert it.
What's that development right there to the north of it?
This?
Yeah.
This is the Livingston development, known as-
Woodcombines.
Woodcombines, yeah.
The town forest is right next to it.
It's right in front of it. The other piece is actually right in front of it.
So, what's the one that we swapped, where's our land swap?
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So, here's the town forest here.
Because that's where they were going to put those other condos.
Yeah, this is the one we swapped, is behind the town forest, so that's why I said that, you know, town forest is adjacent to it.
So, I'd like, I'd like to see if we can make a decision tonight, since this is on the warrant, it's Article 11. So, I'll just open it up for discussion. Karen?
Just, can you remind me the terms under the, that we need to replicate in order to fulfill the-
Yeah, what were the considerations?
The agreement?
All right, the land, what we, and I, by the way, I'm talking to the Attorney General on this, and I've, today, and I spoke also with Bob O'Connor, who's in the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, who oversees Article 97 land use policy. So, one of the requirements was that, in concert with them, that we find a piece of land that is 7.1 or so acres. The land will have similar environmental attributes and benefits to the public as the public safety complex property had prior to commencement of construction, which includes, for examples, being forested, containing, for examples, being forested, containing prime forest and farm soils, being important to drinking water, being easily accessible to the public for recreation, and being connected to other protected open space. And on that land, we should then promptly apply a conservation restriction.
And you feel all four of these meet those criteria?
Yeah. I mean, different balances, one, my recommendation, is that what you're asking for?
Not yet, but yes.
Okay, all right. Yes, pretty much do all meet.
The other question I had is on the town forest site.
Yes.
What, do you, on that site, would you have a recommendation of what would be the appropriate section?
What I would do would be to take the front section. It abuts conservation land here, and it forms one section that could be all in conservation. There's already parking here, so it's accessible to the public. So for, literally, for the cost of going to the planning board and splitting this parcel off, we have land that could readily be placed on which a conservation restriction could be placed. It's adjacent to, really, the land that is, was in consideration earlier.
Does the back piece, the Clap Road piece, have trails that come near to the back of the forest? So in theory, that if you did the back, you could also, it's already accessible?
Yeah, if we did the back, you could access it to this area here, but there isn't currently no access.
There are no trails, yeah.
So, and we don't really know how we want to develop that land either, so you may, you may end up.
You don't want to land lock it?
Yeah.
But that property abuts the other one we're looking at, or we're looking to put it fields back there.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah, that's this property up here.
Right.
So the back of the town forest is here. It is accessible to the extent that it's abutting other land, but it's not, it's abutting some conservation land, but it's, you can't get there from, unless we, unless we start working on, until we start working on this land here.
Okay.
How much, how much land was on Woodland Road? 15 acres, did you say?
Woodland Road was 15 acres, yes. I think of the ones we've talked about, that might be a little bit more difficult sell, because it is, by sell, I mean with the state.
Because it's wet?
Because of the wetness of it, yeah. Also, it abuts the railroad tracks. Which is less desirable than.
My thought was just, my thought was to deed the whole thing, all 15 acres, the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, and tomorrow's point, it's, there's a lot of homes that are nearby.
What we can do between now and whenever is pursue additional investigation of these,
you know. You, really, you have until the spring town meeting to apply a conservation restriction to any of those lands.
Right. Well, it'll take that long anyway, the process is so long.
So if you have a slam dunk you want to go forward with, we could do that at the fall town meeting, if you're wanting to further.
Right. The, one sec, Karen. Tony, do you have any questions?
I, I think the only thing, what Sean was saying, we could do it all. The only reason I wouldn't do that, and same reason why I didn't want to do the Ellis State, is at some point in time, you're going to want to do something somewhere that you're going to have to put more acreage into conservation. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't do more than, than you had to, only because you're losing a chit that you may need some time in the future when you have to put another seven acres into conservation, because you want to use a piece of property somewhere else in town.
What's kind of an interesting find in this whole experiment, Mr. Bignani, is that this 20 acres is not in conservation. And this 20 acres abuts land that's not in conservation, in addition to land that is in conservation, so. But it, it opens it to further consideration, as you say, in the future generations, and we pick our seven acres down here.
Yeah, I would pick my seven acres on the back of what's already, I would try to avoid taking frontage, I guess is my point.
You'd avoid the frontage?
Yeah.
But you need to have access to the public.
Right, but they would have access through the, through the existing piece that's already there, right?
Is that a possible way to access the property? We're trying to get fields on back there?
What are you asking?
Yes.
Is it possible to gain access to the fields back there? Is that Tony's question?
To build a road that way, because.
Actually, I have a wetlands map here.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be helpful.
GIS is what would be interesting.
Al's getting a wetlands map.
Yeah, there's actually, there are no wetlands on this property. There are wetlands coming right through here. So this is, there's a wetland, because we have to do a wetlands crossing.
I mean, that's one reason why I probably wouldn't do that.
Right.
Wetlands kind of go up in this area somehow and down through here. Here's the wetland map if I can see it.
Are there any trails in the, in the Ellis piece on that side of 3A?
Not that I know of. I know I parked here with my family, and we've walked the limited trail that's in there now already. It's not a really big trail, but it's a good place for a quick break.
I've walked in there. John, did you have any comments?
No, I mean, my, I was curious to see the wetlands, the GIS, just to see what kind of access you could get to the swapped portion of land. And I do know that, I think, Al, I'm just looking at the map over here, I think two of the, two of the parcels, not necessarily on the town forest, but on the other one that you have on Clap Road, may, or should have had a conservation restriction, or may have it, through the Livingston project, correct? If you put your hand up next to the project, that triangular piece to your left, that one, and the one south, I thought.
When you look at the, that wetlands map, you'll see that's where the wetlands, the wetlands come through here.
And then that one there, I thought.
This is another little something in here and.
There might have been restrictions. I thought there were restrictions on that for, but I don't know.
Oh, I don't know.
Can I see exactly what you're talking about yet?
You know, there's, it's interesting, land that is in conservation goes to something called Article 97 land.
Right.
You, you can't place a conservation restriction on it. So you know how we have to place a conservation restriction on all the land of the Ellis State? We have to go to the legislature and take it out of conservation, so we can put a conservation restriction on it. It's unbelievable. When I talked to the AG about that, they're going to pursue a little better understanding of it. So.
Thank you. But none of these are in conservation?
No.
Correct.
So we wouldn't have to.
Yeah. So the one I wouldn't do is the Clap Road one, until we figure out what we're going to do back there with the fields. So I would eliminate that one.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Yes. And how, you know, just, could you pull the woodland one up, Al, again? And again, the reason why I like it is it's in a different part of town.
Uh-huh.
So half of it.
Yeah, so about half of it is probably pretty, pretty dry up towards the, the paper street there, I would imagine. Do you have a wetlands map for that piece as well, Al?
I do, yep.
Yeah, I think it's.
Yep. It's pretty wet.
The whole thing is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I've walked in there, I've done, I've been in there a number of times, but.
Okay, I didn't know it was that wet.
It's officially, it's officially, yeah, but that doesn't mean that we can't put a conservation restriction on it.
I'd just be concerned that it doesn't meet all of the criteria that we are.
There wasn't a criteria of upland, but there was a criteria of wooded, which is a nicely wooded, anyway, I'm not trying to sell that one, I'm just saying, the reason it stayed on the list was it met.
It's dry, so it's not, I mean, 7 acres.
A number of the criteria.
Okay.
Take that one down?
Sure, if nobody else has any other questions about.
I like that one. That's an option.
Yes? Keep it?
I mean, I like it as an option for the reasons that were expressed.
The other thing is you've got all that other land that may come to us shortly.
Yep.
So that could be a bigger walking area than, than it is right now.
Than originally, yeah. Any other comments on woodland?
Yeah, well, who owns the land outside the yellow but inside woodland? Those look like they're drawn-out house lots, but they're not.
They're not developed.
They're not developed.
Petroleum, yeah.
Oh, it's still privately owned?
Yeah, Nelson Petroleum, who lives in Arizona or someplace, inherited it, as I understand.
I think they developed that whole area already.
Their family developed this.
Right.
These lots never could perk.
Right.
They're, so they never developed it further. They've, taxes are not being paid, I believe, on these.
So a couple of them are on a tax lane, but they're real small lots and they're not worth anything, so I haven't put my efforts into something like that, because it really hasn't been cost, cost worthy with my budget. But there are a couple of it that are to end tax lane. But they're really small.
And expense, there's some expense and time and effort to convert them, so that's why they've stayed not, we haven't actively pursued those. Okay?
And then the last one is the one down by 3A.
Yes.
Down by the Tac Factory Pond. Is that of interest to anyone on the board? Any comments on that one?
It's all cleared, isn't it, Al? I don't think there's any, is there much in the, in the way of wood?
No, it's pretty much open and shrubby.
Right.
So it wouldn't meet the, have lots of tall trees, but it's clearly protecting the water source.
Mm-hmm.
It's clearly adjacent to conservation land, and, and it's accessible to the public through that conservation land and through Route 3A.
But there's no.
This is drawn for me by Penny Pipes. Thank you.
That would be, that's conservation, really, a prime one, because of Tac Factory and the reservoirs across the street, and we already have conservation land there, so that would kind of fit in in some day, put some trails out there.
Okay.
How much acreage on that? 12, 12, all right.
So if you wanted to take the seven, seven next to Tac Factory and keep the other south.
That's a thought.
Yeah, because that protects the watershed. And I know when we purchased the land, or however, we did get that piece of property with the Tudor house on it, that there was a lot of concern about any fertilizers of such being used near Tac Factory, and you can't have horses there, they commit damages and stuff like that. We kept that. But farther away you get, if you can possibly field on the south side, in conservation at the north side of Tac Factory, because you can't put anything there, it's flat, you really can't use that section for fields.
Okay. Comments on that piece?
Well, I think the fact that you put a house there, we sold and had a house built there, ruined any idea of any type of future fields. I think it totally protects our water supply. You got Tac, no pond, and I'm all for like putting it there because I'm like, it's our water supply.
Yeah.
And I know that people want fields, but that's not the place for it. It's just not.
So you like that one?
Yeah, I like that one.
Okay.
I agree with John. I think protecting the water supply is, is a huge benefit. There are no trails on the rest of the other, the abutting conservation right now?
No, but Brad and I have discussed, wouldn't that be?
Penny, Penny, got to give your name and your.
Oh, I'm sorry, Penny Scott Ice, April Hill Road. That, that would be awesome, because it is flat, and it's a totally different area from the west end, you know, and so we definitely, it's on our radar down, down the road to put some trails in there, and it would just, the Tac Factory, that just really strikes a chord with me.
All right. Any comments from the public? Yes?
Andrea Hunt, 66 Vanlot Road. In discussing the town forest, I had just walked in the town forest, the further one up, off of Maple Street with the dog today, and that had a sign that said that it was conservation land. These 20 acres that you're saying are not conservation land, do you know how it is listed on our assessor's map, or how is it assessed?
Yes, it's listed as town land.
Just as town land?
No, it's not, it was purchased in 1925, predating all of the Article 97 and conservation restrictions, and it was, has never been converted.
And is that part of the list at all that is in the town charter as green space?
Have no idea.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, can I?
Can I just make one other comment? I do believe you were asking about wells on land that had CRs. You cannot put a well on land that has a CR on it. Okay, so that's why woodland, right? It's very, very well over there, that might end up being a water supply at some time. And if you get a CR on it, you won't be allowed.
I think we've, we've been told that you can. I don't know where, we'd have to check that.
Okay, I've been told, the CRs that I've been working on.
Yeah, that's something we definitely need to find.
Yeah, we need to clarify that, because we were always told that you could take it out of that for that purpose if needed.
That land on woodland probably wouldn't, because of the MBTA there, it might be a problem.
Too close.
But anyway, it's a, it's a good idea for consideration future for the Water Department.
Well, and I mean, my intention isn't to force this. If there's, if you need further time, I just, if we can't decide this evening, then we'll have to make some different motions on the floor for Article 11, because I don't think we can move Article 11 forward without having a piece of land identified.
I could move with Tac, Tac Factory. I think that's got good sources to protect the water supply, the, the north part of it.
The north part, I agree. Okay. John?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I think that protects our water supply, and I think, to me, is most important.
Okay. Works for me. We have a motion to move for consideration the Tac Factory Pond. Is that what we want to call it?
Yeah, well, actually, there's a.
Do you have a name for it?
There is a suggested way to approach the motion.
Okay.
Forwardive?
The second option.
This is the, this is the parcel known as 47-229R.
Okay. And what's the amount of acreage we're required to?
7.1.
7.1 is the acreage?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, this is 12.2.
Right, but by the agreement, it's 7.1?
Right.
Okay.
Want a motion?
Yes, please.
Will the Board of Selectmen vote to seek counsel's advice on designating the following parcel for conservation purposes and imposing a conservation restriction on town of property identified as parcel identification 47-2-29-R, a 7.1-acre parcel out of a 12.2-acre parcel located on the northerly section?
Mm-hmm.
On Chief Justice Cushing Highway, near Tac Factory Pond Road?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris, a second by Mr. Danahue, further discussion. Al?
I have some for this. This is the area that is wet already. Why don't, why don't you make a motion, if I could suggest, that we, we look at the property in its entirety?
Okay.
And find out, now that goes specifically to the AG and to our, with our attorney?
See, works best.
We can make sure that there's no.
Give you some flexibility.
I don't want to come back again, so.
Yeah.
We can narrow it down. You could say, you could say 7.1 to 12.2 acres of something.
Okay. Can I just strike the, make it a 12.2, Lorraine? Is that?
7.1 to 12.
No, just strike the 7.1 and just call it the 12.2 in its entirety, and then Al recommend to us?
Because you're, because you're actually asking me to go see counsel on it, not designate it.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
I just thought.
But we're not making a motion that it's going to be all 12 acres.
Correct.
No, that's just the, the size of the parcel that we're looking at, to identify seven.
That would be at the, at the time of the, what you decided.
No, we're good. I think we're good. All right. We got a motion by Mr. Harris, a second by Mr. Danahue. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Right, 5-0. Al, Kent, thank you.
Good job, Al.
Great work.
Everybody, Pam, everyone that worked on that, Brad, Karen, whoever, Conservation, Amy, thank you very much for helping us move that forward. All right, so next is to review and assign the warrant articles for our November 14 special town meeting. Just quickly. All right.
How many are there?
So, there are 12. Okay, 12 articles. It's five of us.
Four. Four.
What?
Four.
Because he will be absent.
Oh, really? Okay, it's four of us.
I think typically you'll take the first five.
Eight.
I take the first 10? Yeah.
They're all budgetary.
All right, I will take one.
Nancy, the first five are basically budgetary.
That's the chair.
Congratulations.
All right, so I take the first five. See how amenable I am?
I'll take CPC. I'll take Article six.
John's going to take Article six. All right, one minute. Article seven, John?
I'll take seven. I'll take eight.
Well, there's a couple of us here.
Tony, do you want to take?
Well, Karen, which ones do you feel comfortable with?
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
I thought I get told what to do.
No, you can choose.
Just kidding. It doesn't really, I mean, who wants to...
So you want to do seven, eight, what is seven?
Seven is just the seawall.
Seawall.
All right, so you and I will do eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. So you pick whichever ones of those you want to do.
Do you want to do seven or the summer?
John?
John?
I'll do seven. I'm happy to do, 12 would be great.
All right, so why don't you do 11 and 12?
I'll do 11 and 12? Okay.
And I'll do...
You want to do eight, nine, 10?
Sure.
You sure you want to do 11, Karen? Or do you want to have Tony do 11 just because you weren't on the board during the whole discussion?
Yeah, I know, I'm kind of thinking that might be...
All right, I'll do 11.
Just want to give you that out.
You pick one of the other ones you want.
So pick either...
Well, I mean, would it be more efficient to go all together then?
Not necessarily, it doesn't matter.
Okay. Because I was going to say the building revolving funds then.
Okay, Article 10. So you'll do...
I'll do eight, nine, and 11?
Yeah. Eight, nine, 11. All right, so Lorraine, we have, just to repeat, Maura will do one through five, John will do six, seven, Tony will do eight and nine, Karen will do 10, Tony will do 11, Karen will do 12. Okay? All right, that was easy. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is to review, discuss, and vote, all business. I have to be on time here, right? It's not a public hearing, right? It's a continuation of the public hearing for the Hummer Rock Seafood, otherwise known as Nautical Two. Mr. Lehman's the applicant, John the attorney, how are you, gentlemen?
How are you doing, Tony?
Welcome.
Good evening.
What's seven?
So this is a continuation of a hearing for a liquor license.
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ieta, Counselor St. K, Attorney at Russell Park in Quincy, with me is Stephen Lehman. This is a continuation from the hearing that began at the end of July. At that time, the board had requested that we attend and appear before the planning board and then report back obviously on the findings. So I guess procedurally speaking, after that meeting, we did meet with the planning board in August. And at that time, our focus, as we understood after Mr. Lehman having conversations with the building department, was that would be parking and seating. When we attended the hearing, we weren't privy to any of the other departmental reviews or comments until the night of the hearing. So it kind of let us, put us at a disadvantage. So there's a lot of additional questions at that time from some of the different departments. The suggestion was made by planning for additional renderings, site plans, and actually elevations. And just not to bore you, but by way of review, this is a permitted use as a right. It is general business zone, so what we're looking to do, which is a thousand square foot restaurant, was a permitted use as a right. So we went into the planning board thinking the focus is on one thing, there's some changes and the like. When we left, Mr. Lehman looked into what would be required for those additional elevation plans, site plans, renderings, et cetera. And just by way of planning and through the engineers, in the tens of thousands of dollars for those plans to be brought forth that the planning board had requested. So obviously, Mr. Lehman had to take a step back, take an approach. Again, what he was looking to do at that time was a 28-seat restaurant with, again, the application here for the full liquor license. Mr. Lehman has since adjusted that plan, had additional conversations with the building department, and the plan or the idea was to go back on the seating, which in fact would reduce the parking need and requirement. Just generally speaking, the site itself has 25 parking spaces as was drawn out on a parking plan. I believe you may have had an opportunity last time to look at that. There are approximately six parking spots up front. The question that was brought up at the planning board is, I think some of them did encroach, not on the public way, but on the sidewalk portion by maybe eight to 10 inches. So the idea there is instead of a major site plan administrative review, which was the initial application in front of the planning board, it was appropriate, based on a letter that I had just recently submitted today from the building commissioner, that a site plan waiver could be requested was appropriate based on the reduction in seating. So since that time, essentially what was also submitted today, and I apologize for if you didn't have an opportunity to review it, is a floor plan now with 16 seats, eight at the bar, two foretops. So it's a total of 16 seats for the restaurant and bar area, as opposed to the 28 that was originally applied for. The result of which is essentially a requirement for a four-to-one ratio for the parking is that it would be minimum four parking spaces on the site. As I mentioned before, the site itself has 25 spots. Mr. Lehman is the only tenant at this location, although there are other available space there. He's been the only one in, I think, approximately the 14 years, and he's been in there for the last five years. That being said, the creation of four parking spaces was our feeling in front of, you know, when we were able to, if and when we got to the planning board, would be a minimal impact on the neighborhood, on both off-street and on-street parking. If you were to take all those 25 spots out of the equation, the addition of four additional spots for the off-street, sorry, on-street parking would not be a burden to the community. So that was the idea and that was the plan. There was a hearing scheduled on October 26th in front of the planning board, but because of the change from a major administrative site plan review to the request for a site plan waiver, there just wasn't enough time. They didn't want to hear us on the 26th. They treated it as a separate application, and therefore were unable to have that planning board meeting prior to this evening's hearing. That being said, I think this board has the ability and hopefully has enough information, enough tools at their disposal to be able to make a decision tonight.
Do you have a lease?
We do have a lease.
Did you send it?
I wasn't able to. I actually, the landlord, we thought this was submitted.
I would submit to you that the fact that we didn't get the lease in time, that I'm not prepared to make a decision on that tonight, and the fact that we're going to have the planning board take a look at it, I would say that this, I'd like to see the lease. I asked that the first time back in August or July.
Right.
And I see the email from Lorraine asking for it. So the first thing I look for, I'm glad you asked for it because I was going to ask that question tonight. So I'm not prepared to make a decision on it tonight. I don't want to waste your time, but I'm just telling you right now, I'm like, I want to see the lease. And frankly, then I'd say, you're waiting to hear and go before the planning board. I want the planning board to make a determination with your site plan.
And to that...
I don't want to give, I personally don't want to give a license out. That's what I said back in July or August, I forgot when you were last before us. I want to make sure that yes, indeed, the site is appropriate before we give out a license. Everything's fine on that end. I said that to you. I'm not going to, you know, give it away because I said I'd honor that, but I'm not prepared to make a decision on it tonight. I don't want to waste your time, but I just want to cut to the chase because I'm like, the lease isn't there, I want to see the lease, and I want the planning board to take a look at it.
So the, as you know, the requirements are a legal right to occupy. Mr. Lehman has that. He actually was hoping that the landlord would be attending, but he's not, he's in New Hampshire for business. But, you know, at a minimum, as you know, is legal right to occupy. We have that today. I know you haven't had a chance to review it. I understand.
And I'm just saying to you, I understand you think that maybe we can look at it. I'm not going to sit here for the next half hour, 40 minutes to review the lease and determine that. I might, you know, this should have been submitted beforehand, no big deal. I understand things happen, happens to me a lot, but I want to take a look at it before I actually sit up here and make a determination, that's all. It's one of the things that we require.
And as to your concerns about the planning board as well, again, my take on that is it's a permitted use as a right. The only thing that's in fluctuation or fluidity is there will be some type of food establishment here. The question is, what is the ultimate look of it? So I felt that, you know, I felt it was important that I be here as well to present that and that put forth that you have the ability to make that decision in the sense of what I'm representing. And I'll talk a little bit about, you know, further, you know, how it changed since the last time. But Mr. Lehman has the qualifications, which is obviously a key factor into that. The other is the public need, as you know, is the main requirement for issuing of a new liquor license. He had the support from, I think, over 150 signatures last time. Some of the members of the neighborhood spoke in favor of it. We have a letter in favor from Robert Vogel as well, saying it would be a positive contribution. And again, my take is but for changes and, you know, cost prohibitions, you know, we would have hopefully had decisions already prior to this time. So I'd just like to say that, you know, in the board's discretion, you do have the ability to obviously look favorably on this application and grant it, subject to final reviews and approvals from all the boards, which has happened in the past in terms of, you know, your ability to do so.
Usually when there's like one piece that's outstanding, but I think there's a lot that's still outstanding with regards to being reviewed by planning board. And I agree, we didn't have a lease in hand.
And, yeah, I mean, to the planning board, again, it's not a special park, it's not a variance, so I think it does limit that. I mean, a lot of times when there's a new construction restaurant or business, you know, you need those requirements which are, which obviously are more stringent. We don't have that. And I think, you know, you have to go to Mr. Lehman's experience. He's been a business owner and situated for over 20 years now, a prior licensed holder and manager. And so I think if you were to make that decision, you know that it would be in good hands in that sense. He does have, and he's familiar with the rules and regulations of this board, the AVCC, the laws of the Commonwealth. And so he has that experience behind him. What he's looking for obviously is an opportunity. He was thrown a bit of a curveball, given the requirements that the planning board first came at him, you know, based on that first initial meeting.
If I could just let you know, I did put a package in for you today at four o'clock that I received an email to include our advice, our revised premises of recognition. So we just received that, like, this afternoon. I still did not...
Right, I have that here. Yep.
So if we have that...
Yeah, absolutely.
Tony?
Yeah, I agree with John. It's tough for us to make a decision here without having information beforehand. The one question I have is, we keep calling it a restaurant, but now there's only two tables in it.
Right, so obviously the concept, you know, he always wanted, Mr. Lehman always wanted, focus on high-end food and also drinks, signature drinks, cocktails like that. So with the change now for reduction in seating, the emphasis has to be on the quality of food and...
Two tables?
Well, there's two full, yeah, high tops, and there's eight at the bar. So in other words, there won't be a, it's not a drinking bar, there will be food service at the bar.
I beg to differ, but I think the reality here is, you know, you kind of stake that up with the planning and whatever they come up with is the thing.
So you can see how we see a bar with two tables and don't really consider it a restaurant?
Well, I think you have to think of like, concept of like a gastropub, which is a focus on high-end food and quality drinks. It's really a neighborhood, you know, establishment.
Give us a little credit. I've been in the restaurant business for a while.
I mean, you're not going to succeed as an eight-person bar either. I mean, so you have to have something other than drinks. I mean, and he's bringing in a chef, and what I'm saying is that it can't be just one or the other.
What's this space here going to be? This open space?
It's more of a pantry area now.
So that's behind a door where...
All there. Well, these are all things that the planning board usually will certify, right?
Well, here's the thing.
Well, we have to decide whether we want to give a liquor license to an establishment that looks like this.
I just want to make sure the establishment is going to be put in place. And I'm not getting into any motives here, I'm just saying, I just want to make sure the establishment's there. Whenever we give a license, we know that there's already an existing, or if not, they're building one, and I just want to make sure it's going to happen. I don't want to be giving a liquor license away only to find out it's not going to be built, and then we're going to have to rescind it. If, your business model's your business model. If it's going to be successful, it's going to be successful. It's going to be a gastro bar, good. I'm not here to tell you what to do. I just want to make sure that everything's done and before I end up saying, you have it? Fine, I'll give it to you. But like I said, I just want to make sure you've gone through the necessary review boards and, but right now, I'm not prepared to do it because, like I said, information, you got to understand the information, we asked for it in advance because we review this, you know, in between my job and family and everything else, I didn't have any time to review any of the stuff this afternoon till I walked up here. So I'm at a disadvantage, that's why I say to you. But I just think at this point, whatever you decide, my feeling is it's going to be a bar. If you're successful in creating into something unique and different, good for you. That's your job. That's your business model, go for it. But my view on it right now is that I just want to make sure that, you know, if the planning board's going to accept the waiver on the site, that's fine. That's their purview, it's not mine. But I want to make sure you line everything up and then come back to me from my standpoint, and then we'll go from there.
And to that, Mr. Lehman has been probably in the town offices the last three, four months anyways. All the rough inspections are done, and he has been in contact with all the departments. So it is a matter of just, you know, crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. He is ready to go. He really thinks within 60, 90 days he'd be open for business.
Okay. Sean, did you have any questions?
Not right this second, no.
Karen?
I agree that I would prefer to let the planning board go through its process. You're going in two days and then get on the 21st, and that is, you know, we rely on them for those assessments, and I would, I think it's the cart before the horse on it. So I would prefer to wait till the planning board's up mind.
And when can they get before the planning board?
The 9th and the 21st.
Well, actually, the 9th is no longer, I guess it's not the 20th, it's the 21st.
Oh, okay.
November 21st.
November 21st.
Okay.
It's Tuesday? Tuesday night?
It's the same night as this one.
Right, is that typical?
I didn't pick the date.
No, I don't know. Do they meet on Tuesday nights?
Usually it's Thursday.
I didn't think so much.
It's Thanksgiving that week.
Well, it's Thanksgiving, so nobody thinks around, I'm sure.
We're not working that day.
We don't have a meeting?
Not on Thanksgiving. We are.
Yeah.
But the planning board's not.
Well, I think you're hearing that we want to let this go through the process through planning before we pass any motion or approval for a license. Any comments from the public? Yes?
Yeah, Bill Arndberg, he was Steve Maderos, who's the budweiser. I just, and I agree with the board, and I've been at all the hearings here, and I've personally been waiting for the lease for 100 days. Very much like, I'd like to look at the lease, if we have some questions about that. But in addition to that, the planning board meeting, which happened, this happened a long time ago, I don't know if it was two and a half months ago, there was a myriad requirements because there was no definitive information vis-à-vis engineering, surveying, or multiple issues. At the Design Review Committee, there were a lot of unanswered questions, and as far as I know, no one's been back there. But one of the things of interest, and I really think, to iron out what the concept is, although a site plan waiver has been filed, the major site plan application hasn't been withdrawn, so they get two balls in the air. So I don't know where this is going to land or whether it's that. And whether something's in allowed use in the district, it's still subject to site plan approval in town, which is the key. There's health and safety issues vis-à-vis the parking. There's a lot of things. There's a lot of things, such as you have an open deck with no seats there, and, you know, what is the real occupancy, and those are the kind of concerns that Mr. Maderos has. So I, we 100% agree that this, number one, should go through the planning board process So I, we 100% agree that this, number one, should go through the planning board process and design review of applicable, and but also, very much, we'd like to see this leased to make sure that, there's a lot of things here, because as you, as you may remember, it's been quite some time since the last hearing here, this is a very, very small portion of this building. Just because the building is utilized here, this is, I don't want to misspeak, but I believe it's an over 10,000, 15,000, showing us how many square feet of building?
The building is 12,000, six and six, yes.
So it's 12,000 square feet, so there's a lot of utilization there, potential parking. There was also issues with the planning board. Some of this parking isn't known, it's by, it isn't owned, built by easement, it's by informal agreement. And one of the things the planning board is saying is that, hey, if you want us to count your parking, you got to have a formal agreement. Again, I haven't seen anything to that effect. So that's just our comment, I would just echo that we concur with the board.
All right, thank you. All right, so I think you're hearing that we're not ready to approve a liquor license this evening for you. I know the, and Lorraine, I'll look for some guidance here. I mean, this has been pending for a while. Do they just need to resubmit when they're ready with everything? I mean, or is this out there being held?
It'll be your decision. I mean, Mr. Dan, he asked after the last meeting that I send them a letter, which I did, to ask them to withdraw the application. They're not ready by this evening. So it would be your discretion what you would like them to do, whether you want them to withdraw the application, resubmit at a later date after the planning board decision, or continue to postpone again. That would be up to you.
Is anybody waiting for a license? Is there a line or no?
How about this?
Well, we continue it.
To our next meeting after Thanksgiving?
In December, after, yeah, the 21st, yeah.
I believe it's, I'm just typing, December 5th, yes.
So why don't we continue it to the 5th?
Should have determination by then, right, from the planning board?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so do I have a motion to, motion to continue? Do I have a motion to continue the public hearing to December 5th?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Harris?
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? 5-0. So it's been continued till December 5th.
Thank you.
Following.
Can you give the lease now, or do you want to...
I can't, I have, I mean, it'd probably be easy if I emailed, is that okay? Well, I have one copy. Find a printer and print it off, because there's...
That's better.
Thank you. I'll send it to you guys. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is to discuss and vote a Board of Selectmen newsletter. Karen, I'll turn this over to you, Mrs. Campfield.
Yes, so one of the things I think all of us have heard over and over again is that people would like to find a way to, to access sort of what we do and what we've accomplished and what's coming up. And although all that information is readily available in, on the website and in various methods, it's, sometimes you have to dig for information, and sometimes people just want bite-sized updates. The local paper does a really good job of covering sort of the meaty things, but throughout the course of the recent election, this was kicked around. So being that that's sort of my thing, I, I suggest that we consider doing a newsletter of sorts after every Board of Selectmen meeting to very, in sort of a user-friendly way, present what our accomplishments are and what our goals are going forward. So I drafted a sample just based on the last meeting, which you have in your packets. I also have copies of, which I'm happy to share with others, too. We have extras. But it obviously brings up a whole host of questions about how do you get it done and how do you distribute it and that. And so I wanted to just open the conversation as an effort to find a way to, to reach the residents a little more directly. So that's what we have before you. And I would, you know, there's lots of things to talk about on this because it's sort of a new concept, but I wanted to just generally see how the board felt about initiative. I would suggest that we do a pilot initiative, try it and see if it's feasible, if it's usable, is it functional, and, and then revisit it after our new administrator's onboard. I just felt if we wait till him, it could be quite a while before it's something that comes on his radar.
So I think this is a great idea. When you first brought it up, my concern is just resources from a staff perspective, and I personally would want to wait until we got a new TA because he's ultimately going to be in charge of sustaining this moving forward, you know, after a pilot. I don't, that's my feeling, is I think, you know, it really falls under him and his staff to make sure that this is published and to figure out where it's posted. But I think it's a great idea, I would just like to wait until Jim gets up.
I think it's a great idea. I'd say the chair should be doing this. Just kidding. No, I agree. I think, I like the idea, the only thing that comes to mind, and Moore's right, I think it's going to be the resources, time-wise. I know my time, I can't put it together. And I'm only saying that, that's the only question I have, you know, like, where, you know, is it going to be Lorraine, Michelle?
No, I would commit, I mean, I'm, that's my business. I would commit to doing it in the pilot time, but we would have to figure it out.
And that's what I'm saying, you know, it's to make this a go for the long-term, because I want to make sure that if we're doing it, that it's going to sustain it, that's all.
So what are you suggesting, that we do a newsletter, a two-page newsletter every other week after our meetings?
Yeah.
And do what with it? Post it?
I would think, because it is a, it'd be a pilot, I, I don't think there's a, it would be reasonable to ask for a budget to print it right now. I think we would try electronic. You know, it would, we could post it on, I don't think it's a burden to just post it on the website and our Facebook page, and, and let it go from that, and, you know, hopefully the media sources would use it, you know, would use it as a vehicle, too.
And we would write the content, the five of us?
Well, that actually is one of my biggest questions, and I look to the experience of the board on this one, is if it's a Board of Selectmen issuance, then that would mean we'd have to all agree or approve it. And if we write it and then do it at the next meeting, the timeliness is no longer affected.
Exactly.
So that concerns me. I don't want to violate open meeting by saying, "What do you guys think? Have you approved it?" Because that wouldn't be...
No, you can't do that.
I can't, you can't do that. So that hiccup in how to process this, I'm concerned about, and I, I look to you guys for guidance, because...
That's another reason why it should be owned under the town administrator and the town as a function of reporting what the board is doing. And that, again, just sort of brings me all the way back to when Jim gets on board, and I think we've all seen, too, that he also has some unique ways that he's using his current website to keep folks updated on his to-do list as well as the board's to-do list, so marrying your idea and what he does today, I think, would be a nice compromise.
Are you laughing at my copy?
He was laughing at my picture. I'm just like, figure out, you know, it looks great.
All right. So I don't know that we need to vote tonight on anything. I mean, are you okay with just...
Yeah, no, I really want to open the dialogue to, to having something like this, because I think we need to move in that direction, and it will certainly be something I would bring as a priority to Jim. I know he's going to have his plate full, and, you know, obviously, this is not as important as fire safety and some of the other things we have to address, but I want to make sure that this is...
No, but communication was a big part of our, our interview process and our concern, so...
The, the only other portion of this, and I think, I, I agree that there's hiccups we got to face, and I want to have the conversation, is would the board have any objection if, as I understand it, one of us could individually do it, and then we don't have to worry about, you know, it being blessed by everyone? If I were to produce something like this strictly from my point of view, is that allowable? Is it advisable? And is it, would you guys have an objection to it?
I mean, I think you can do it on behalf of your own reporting, that's not on behalf of the entire board.
Right.
Be your newsletter.
Yeah, just be your newsletter. No, but I wouldn't want to...
No, but she would have to do it on her Facebook page, her, it's like, becomes her communication to her constituency.
Lorraine?
Yeah.
You think that would work legally?
I would have to say I would check with the town administrator and the council.
I like the idea of communicating it out, though. I don't like the idea of having to write it out.
So I think what would happen is you're going to have to filter it through one source, and I think it's going to have to go through our administrator, town administrator. You know, the, the concept of drafting it on your own, you could. Problem is, is that the content's going to come through one person generally, and then...
Right, it's not ideal.
And that creates the, the open meeting issue, because then if you circulate, you start, you know, that, that becomes a problem. I like the idea, I mean, I like the fact that you have this outline. Some could be born as a plate, generally, not, not everything, but I mean, certain things happen, you know, apartment-wise, and congratulations to this and that, that works. Something that's new, it opens like the playground, that makes sense. And then giving updates as to the future. I think, as we do with the town administrator's report, we keep having things that keep kind of shifting up, which can be utilized. So in other words, it's not a duplicative type of effort, it's stuff that you can continue to do.
Right, it's just pulling what's there and making it more accessible.
I can see the value in how tax, not tax-wise, but resource-wise, it, it won't take a lot, but it's not trying to put it in application right now, that's all.
Maybe we could put like a cartoon in it.
Um...
I could draw that.
Okay. Tony's in charge of editorials.
I'm not good at cartoons, I don't know, but, but, that being said, I like, I do like it, Karen, that's what I said to you before, and I'm like, maybe, maybe, I'm waiting until Jim's on the call to do it, but in the meantime, I know that's two months, a month and a half away.
Okay, well, we can work on development. I just wanted to make sure that it was a priority and it was something that, you know, we could hit the ground running when we do get him.
And I think the other value of it is this, while certain resources and outlets will extract and, and report on things, this can also identify things that maybe just are missed.
I mean, there is a ton of content in here that is already public record that just could go out.
Oh, yeah. I'm not at all saying that, that this is any new stuff, but none of it should be new because it's all public record. It's just how we...
It's just easy to read.
How we presented, it could be a little more user-friendly.
I agree.
Absolutely, so.
Okay. I will, thank you for the input.
No, thank you for bringing it forward.
Al, do me a favor. Before our next meeting, can you make these things shut off?
The AC?
Yeah, no, they're just, they're awful. Either that or I'll fix them.
Turn them down to 60 before we leave.
No, it doesn't, when they cycle on and off, they cycle just...
Turn the temperature down.
No, I don't care about the temperature, it's the RPMs and things.
But I mean, it won't cycle if you turn the temperature down, probably, but I'll, I'll take care of that for you.
I did, I turned them all down to 60, but they still kick on.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
They're brutal.
They sell, sell out cool air or...
Yeah, so the issue is the noise, is that right?
Yeah, the RPMs, it's just, kind of like the library.
Okay, we'll talk.
All right, guys. Let's go on to the next item. Discuss and vote the annual town meeting and town election dates. Al, it's yours?
I just, I typed up some information in your backup material. You want to vote on it tonight?
Tell my name.
Next evening.
So one date is recommended for April 9th, 2018?
Yeah, I talked to Kathy Carr about this.
No holidays?
Easter is the first.
Easter is the first, yeah.
We checked holidays, Jewish holidays, the school vacation calendar. So you can think about this, you don't want to roll it too much.
That would be a week away, that's a Monday.
When's April vacation for the kids?
That's before April vacation. April vacation, I think, is generally either the 16th or...
Second or third week.
Or the third week, so it would work.
So that's good.
Yeah.
Does that give enough time?
What date is it?
April 9th, Nancy?
April 9th.
What's that work for you?
I can, I can review when Michelle, you were working on the budget calendar, I don't know if we were, I don't know if we were on that day or not, but we can...
It's a little early.
Because if we can push it back, it would...
Later is better, right?
Later is better. What was the next Monday, was the 16th, you said, and that's vacation?
That may be school vacation week.
That's school vacation.
Well, the next one, annual, was in May, 19.
No, that's the election. She's giving you, because you have to do eight weeks in between annual town meeting and then the election.
That's a long time off.
Yeah.
So I would say that, let's find out from Nancy, your time-wise with the budget, so that you, if things fit in, don't want any, you know, like rush, get what you need done.
And this year, maybe, with, with Jim coming on and stuff, maybe a...
Maybe nice to push it out.
We have a draft budget calendar, so Michelle, I am ready to get together with Alan and take a look and see what works.
Can we look at that in next, the next meeting? We can take a look at it? Okay.
It's already in draft form. Because we need to vote this at the next meeting.
Okay.
Follow along with that kind of thing.
Right. Okay, so we'll vote that at the next meeting.
Makes sense.
Okay. We already did the board and committee appointments, so discussion vote. Next on the agenda is a discussion and vote on the one-day liquor licenses. We have one for Rivas.
Um...
For a fundraiser, Rivas is working a fundraiser for the Knights of Columbus on Saturday, November 18th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m.
I don't see the motion.
Let me see what I have here.
There was a one.
Okay, so this is for the, I'll move to grant a one-day...
Wine and malt.
Wine and malt. Wine and malt beverage license for, to Riva Restaurant for a function to be held on...
11:18.
November 18th, 2017, from 6:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. at the Knights of Columbus Hall, located at 234 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situate, Massachusetts, room 2066.
I have a motion by Mr. Danahy, second by Ms. Avignani. Any further discussion? There being none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to other business, we just have correspondence. Clerk Danahy?
Trying to find it here, okay.
One of your papers that came in today.
On November 11th, 2017, at 11:00 a.m., the Situate American Legion Post 144 will be holding its 2017 Veterans Day luncheon. The keynote speaker is Dennis Bador, the CDR, or American Legion Post, and anybody who's interested, it is going to be held at the Situate Country Club, located at 91 Driftway. And the other correspondence I have is a letter dated, well, not dated, but it's recent, and it's addressed to Karen Campfield, the Board of Selectmen, saying, "Dear Karen, my sincere thanks for thinking of the archives. When you found the old Situate books, Dean's quote, 'History of Situate,' unquote, is from the original printing, as they are the two Pratt's quote, 'Early planters,' unquote. These books are both treasures, and I will keep them locked in one of the fire safes for safekeeping. Thank you again very much, Elizabeth M. Foster, our town archivist."
I just, I do want to add that I, I delivered them, but they were found in a bag that was donated to the Friends of the Situate Library, and they recognized that these were special, and so they brought it to my attention. But it was definitely the Friends of Situate Library that, that unearthed these treasures.
That's really nice.
Yeah, they are really cool.
Yeah, it's actually, anybody taking a look at them besides Karen? Because I know I have, they're great. They actually have photographs of some of the old buildings in Situate.
No, where are the books?
South Situate.
They're down there.
It's pretty cool. Tells you about the family history and everything else.
Well, and that, you know, people don't realize what a treasure it is, and a lot of people do, but down in the basement, anybody can go on Wednesdays, and if they have an interest in genealogy, or they have, want to look at these books, there, they belong to the town, so you can go down and look through them. It's cool. Said the book nerd.
All right, some more correspondence, John?
Reeds.
About the Reeds Across America?
On December 16th, 2017, at 12:00 p.m., Reeds Across America. Join us on the National Reeds Across America Day, and, where is it? It's going to be coordinating laying wreath ceremonies at Situate Common, that's Lawson Lawson Park, and the Cudworth Cemetery, in coordination with all over, I think it's 1,100 locations. Um, so, um, please join the American Legion Post 144 and the Town's Veteran Services Department at noon, uh, to help lay the wreaths and to remember and honor all our veterans. Uh, and if you want to donate a wreath, please contact the American Legion, again, Post 144, or go online to www.reedsacrossamerica.org.
We have one, a good, some good news from the South Shore Regional School District.
Let me get to that one.
Want me to summarize it for you?
If you can, because it's going off.
Okay, yours is going off, so we received notification on October 30th from, uh, the South Shore Regional School District, which is otherwise known as the Botec, where their preliminary assessments to the towns, um, was amended, and Situate is getting back $4,058. So, thank you. And then next, um, there being no other correspondence, um, we have minutes to approve.
All right.
Do you want this? Can you see mine?
Move to accept the minutes of our next meeting, held on October 17th and 26th, 2017.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahue. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept and not release executive session meetings, meeting minutes for October 17th, 2017, since matters discussed are still pending at this time.
I'll second that one.
Second by Mr. Danahue, all in favor?
Aye.
And move to release the executive session minutes, meeting minutes for August 8th, 2017.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris.
Uh-oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments before we adjourn and sign documents? Does anybody have anything they wanted to add?
Sean Harris' birthday today.
Oh. Happy birthday.
Should've said it, I was beginning, I was saying.
Happy birthday, Sean.
Thank you.
We know you're only 45, so, yes.
Thank you.
That's right.
Good for you.
Veterans Day is this Friday, and town hall will be closed.
Yeah, oh, that's important to know. Excuse me, what?
Uh, Veterans Day is this coming Friday, it's celebrated this Friday, and town hall will be closed. Veterans Day is actually on Saturday, of course.
Right. And actually, before you go on, I had a question. Um, it's at the Situate Country Club, it is the ceremony at the G R hall first, as, as usual? No, it's all at the country club? Okay, thank you.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I need to get that clear, yeah, that wasn't clear to me in the email we got. Okay. Um, and I know folks attended a lot of great events this weekend, so I didn't know, um, Karen, what, did you have anything you want to add?
What did I do this weekend? Is that just?
Well, I know you threw up so many great events this weekend that are.
So, no, it was, it was a, it was a hop-in weekend. I started at the Situate High School, uh, for the craft fair, which I did not realize how incredibly cool that is, it was, it was, the gym was packed with really high-quality stuff, and that was fun to go to, and a lot of people there. And then I went down to the Harbor Community, what is it called? Harbor Community Center, um, and the Council on, uh, Disability, the Disabilities Commission was sponsoring the Accessibility Fair, and there were probably, I would guess, probably 15 tables of everything you could think of, from, from the Council on Aging was there, I got my flu shot, which still hurts, but, um, and GATRA was there, and the, they had, it was wonderful, and I hope it continues, because I thought it, it really provided a lot of information for people. That's what I did this weekend.
Sean, anything to add?
Uh, just, just bring the board up to speed on, uh, the waterways, the other night, the harbor master had kind of laid out his, a five-year plan, and he's, um, not really on his wish list, because he had the fire chief there, representatives from the police department, but a fireboat, 30, probably a 30-foot in length, diesel-powered, with a really high-powered pump on it, in the, to the tune of like $300,000. So, it might be in a few years down the road, but, you know, Chief Murphy spoke about it, you know, fires that are at marinas that can spread so quickly, you know, buildings that are on the water, and then boats that are outside the harbor. Um, the other thing that he spoke about, and, you know, I, I don't have my notes with me, but John and I had spoke to a, an, an, resident, all right, that, um, wanted to harvest oysters, so, um, Tricia, I don't, you know, I think her idea was there were a lot of things going on, and she wanted the town to really have the first crack at it, but some things have to happen first, and first the water has to test, you know, that it's okay, and that's done through the Division of Marine Fisheries, so, they're in the process of doing that, it might be seasonable, seasonal, it might be in certain parts of the harbor, but he's pretty, um, enthusiastic about doing something, and maybe the town will start the initiative, but they do things like this down the Cape, where they might lease out a certain area to private individuals. Um, really, the whole thing is like what we heard a couple weeks ago, and it's pretty exciting if it does come to fruition. You know, as we all know, Island Creek, oysters down in Duxbury, but, you know, we heard from, you know, Mike Tondoff, you know, with his, with his restaurant, you know, being hooked to harvest, or hooked to table harvest, or whatever, you know.
You're right.
So, so, I just, you know, I thought it was pretty exciting, it might be a few years, you know, down the road, you know, in a few years, but, you know, like, like what Karen just presented, if, you know, someone wants to start something, you know, see, see what happens, and it's just pretty exciting, so I just, I'll keep you guys posted as to what's going on, but, you know, it's gonna be baby steps, but, still, I think, you know, I am going to personally, you know, support them 100%, I just, I think, John, you know where they're coming from, and, and I'm sure you are, you guys would jump on board, but, that's really all I have to say, you know, what happened at the last meeting, that was, that's all.
Great, thank you. John?
Um, well, I had a busy weekend between football and baseball, but, uh, Thursday, Friday night, the Situate's, um, boys varsity football team won against Medfield, uh, it was a playoff, and they're going to the championship in their division, um, between the North and South, they're playing Dennis Yarmouth Port on Friday night in Yarmouth, uh, so that'll be very exciting, and, um, aside from that, that's, oh, the only other thing I was gonna say, which is, um, I'll let Tony finish the rest of the sports report, but, they're also going to be playing football at Fenley Park, people probably heard that, but that's gonna be Wednesday night, the night before Thanksgiving, so it's very exciting for, for the, for the town and the high school, uh, to be able to participate.
Do they hire buses for that yet?
I don't know, I hope they do, and I think, I know that the student government was looking and trying to see if maybe they could, um, not just, well, I haven't thought about that one, but, get a bus to go down for Friday night, so that the students can get down, and, uh, maybe get one or two buses down there.
Wednesday night.
What, no, no, I'm talking about this Friday.
For this Friday.
As far as the one for Wednesday night, I'm not sure, that, that might be a little more trickier, because it's the night before Thanksgiving, a lot of traveling, you know, I'm not sure, but.
My understanding, Hingham's sending up five.
Five buses?
Mm-hmm.
I hope.
Hope we look at it.
The school would consider.
Six.
Definitely six.
Yeah.
And, aside from that, that's all I have.
So let me see if I get this right, you're gonna let me do the sports report?
Yeah.